Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Walsh, call the April 27th Council Study Session to order. Due to the Governor's Proclamation 2028 relating to COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make your comments after the presentation and council questions and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Uh, Council President Hunt will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle?
Here.
Yay. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Council President Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
Fantastic. The first item on the agenda is ID 0828, which is the 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Plan. And this will be presented by Susie Moncel, the Senior Budget Analyst. And do we have Susie?
Ah, yes. My apologies.
Do we do the public comment period? Is that? Oh, yes, of course. First public comment, excuse me. Uh, if there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, that would be star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, you're going to look for the hand icon. This varies by device, and one way you might be able to find it is to go to the participant panel and choose raise hand icon on the lower right-hand corner. So I'll wait just a moment, see if anyone wishes to raise their hand and make comment during this general public comment period. And, um, clerk, has anybody signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Thank you. Clerk Aggers speaking. I have no one on the signup list, and I do not see anyone that has raised their virtual hand in the green room.
Okay, fantastic. Well, as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isqawa.gov. And Council President Hunt, do you want to summarize any email comments received?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. We did receive a few emails um, on the parts of the CIP that we'll be discussing this evening. And so I've been summarizing email comments while we're doing virtual meetings. The first, um, we received two emails, um, from different, uh, residents regarding support for the I-90 over and under crossing project, and also, um, projects that would reduce our transportation congestion and, um, referencing that congestion will soon become a problem again. Um, we have seen a, uh, reduction in congestion, um, over the last year, but, uh, still saying that that was a top concern. Um, and then we also received comments regarding the Spar Booster Pump Station. I, um, I believe this is a utility-related project, but the comments did reference, uh, wanting to connect the valley floor with the western part of the Highlands with trails and cleanup effort around that. And so I think that potentially could be relevant to the trails portion, which we will be discussing this evening. And that summarizes email comments related to topics, um, in the CIP that we'll be discussing. Thanks.
Okay, and as I said earlier, the first item on the agenda is ID 0828, which is the 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Plan. And we now welcome Susie Moncel, our Senior Budget Analyst.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. If you'll just allow me one moment to share my presentation. All right. Uh, how does that look?
Looks great.
Great, thank you. Um, so I am Senior Budget Analyst Susie Moncel. Um, and I am here tonight to, uh, provide a presentation that will really serve as the, the vehicle for, to begin council deliberations on the proposed 2022 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan. The purpose of tonight's study session, uh, is to provide an opportunity for the city council to review, discuss, and provide feedback on the non-utility projects in the proposed CIP. Um, we've also had a pretty deep bench of department staff on the call with us this evening. Um, should the council have any project-specific questions as we go through tonight's presentation? Um, so here's where we are with the anticipated city council schedule for this CIP process. We met last week for an overview presentation given to the council, the Parks Board, the Transportation Advisory Board, the Environmental Board, and the Planning Policy Commission, um, as well as any members of the, the community watching at home. Um, tonight's presentation, tonight really begins the city council deliberations. Um, and as I said, focusing on those non-utility projects. And next week, we will be back to open the public hearing and continue council deliberations with the utility projects. And we'll have, uh, additional deliberations on May 11th, allowing, uh, really that final opportunity for council feedback or any final changes to the proposed document. Uh, really just to ensure that staff has time to incorporate those changes, um, into the final document that will then come before the council on the 17th for a vote, um, followed that continued public hearing that evening. Uh, as described in last week's presentation, the CIP is divided into eight asset categories. And tonight we'll be focusing on these ones in the green box, um, which includes capital equipment, municipal, uh, municipal facilities, parks and trails, technology and systems, and transportation. This table summarizes, uh, what's included in the proposed CIP for the asset categories we'll be focusing on tonight. Um, this is the same table that was in the presentation last week, just consolidated down to those, uh, categories we'll be talking about tonight. So as a reminder, that second column notes the number of active projects in each asset category. Active projects referring to projects with anticipated costs within the CIP planning period, so between 2022 and 2027. The third column notes the number of future projects in each asset category. Future-year projects referring to, uh, projects with anticipated costs beyond 2027, but nothing within the planning period of this CIP. And, uh, that final column just totals the cost within these asset categories proposed in the CIP, specifically between 2022 and 2027. Uh, so to begin going through projects, um, and I'll be going a little out of order from, uh, how it was shown on previous slides, um, in anticipation of, uh, a potentially more robust discussions of other asset categories. But I'll be starting here first with capital equipment and technology and system. And we've highlighted a few projects here in each of these, uh, two asset categories as a starting point for council feedback and discussion. Um, as a reminder, the main funding sources for capital equipment projects proposed in the CIP are, uh, real estate excise taxes, or REIT, um, and water utility revenues for that, that excavator equipment. Um, and the main funding sources for technology and systems projects proposed in the CIP are, again, REIT, the IT cost allocation, and utility revenues for the projects that support utility information technology and hardware. Um, so the feedback that we're asking for this evening is, is if the council is, is okay with this mix of projects and funding sources for, for these asset categories. Um, and as I said, we also have department staff in the meeting tonight to answer any project-specific questions that the council may have. Um, so, uh, Councilmember Walsh, I'm, I'm happy to pause at this point, um, if the council would like to ask any questions, or if it's easier to, um, do that as we go through the presentation.
Well, I appreciate that, Susie. I am not, okay, there we go. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Councilmember Hall. Just a quick question on the, um, capital equipment, um, items that are listed here. Um, in the, um, draft Capital Improvement Plan, Project Selection Criteria Matrix, the big table that you put together, which has some very, very helpful information. Thank you for that. Um, both of these projects have a checkmark next to conformity to strategic plan goals, and I was just wondering if someone could elaborate on that.
Uh, sure. Um, I will, uh, start by saying that we, uh, as we are assigning those or checking the boxes under each of those potential selection criteria, um, we defer to the project managers, um, how they felt that they, each of these projects addressed those criteria. Um, and as, uh, City Administrator Bob Quitt mentioned last week, um, that we're also looking at this as an opportunity to continue to build on this process of the selection criteria. Um, so with that sort of teed up, um, I will, uh, see if perhaps, uh, uh, I see we have Public Works Director, uh, Bob York on the call tonight, see if he wants to, uh, to address that question.
Okay, it looks like he is getting promoted up. Um, and Bob, when you get a chance to unmute, we would love to hear from you.
Hi, Bob York, Public Works Director, here, uh, to, um, address whatever I can. And I'm waiting for my phone friends, namely Bennett and, uh, and Harvey to help me on this one. But I can tell you that, um, our utility trucks are, are aging, and that's why, uh, that one's on the list for a, uh, a general fund ask. And the, uh, trailer mountain vacuums excavator is very important in terms of, uh, being able to facilitate more maintenance of our, our infrastructure. So, um, with that, I'm, um, hoping to get more phone friends with my maintenance, um, managers. But that's my, uh, short version of the answer to this capital equipment request.
And Councilmember Hall, what specific, um, which specific checkmark or column were you asking about?
Uh, yeah, thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. Um, the column has to do with conformity to the strategic plan goals. So I was just curious how these two fit within the strategic plan. Touched a little bit on trail maintenance there. Um, but any information would be helpful.
I think this, Bob York again, um, these are a part of the infrastructure, um, asset management, strategic plan element, and, um, we have all these assets. We need to maintain them, and that's the essential reason for these being on our, uh, capital improvement program request.
It looks like Bennett also has his hand raised, so.
Bennett's here, thanks.
Your phone-a-friend has come in. Bennett?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, thank you. Uh, so the two utility trucks on the capital improvement plan, um, have to deal with the street department specifically. In 2019, we were provided a, another employee, and the truck that came with that position, uh, was deferred at the time. And then it also aligns with the infrastructure goal of the strategic plan in that, um, as we are able to have more staff and more places at once, we can maintain more, um, assets. And we're able to do, be much more productive with our, our, uh, our general work. So that, it aligns with the infrastructure strategic goal. And that is the answer for that one.
Okay, Councilmember Hall, did you get the answer to your question?
Yes, that was a very good answer. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, and any of the other council members, do we have other questions on this? Okay, fantastic. Councilmember Goodman?
Uh, thank you. Maybe I'm the outlier here, but I'm not sure which column Councilmember Hall's talking about. Uh, I believe, sorry, this is Susie. Um, I believe, uh, he is, uh, referencing the table in the proposed document where it's sort of that large matrix toward the beginning of the book that lays out, um, the, uh, what we're calling selection criteria, um, that, uh, looks at if each project addresses any of these selection criteria. Okay, thank you very much. I was actually looking at the plan, so I was just looking at the, uh, the, the, a different document. Thank you.
Yeah, and for anybody who might be following along at home, it was linked off of our current, um, tonight's agenda items. But if you're just looking around for the 2022-2027, it's on our website, and then it would be page 16 of 150, which is the Project Selection Criteria Matrix. So I'm not seeing any other questions at this point. So Susie, I'll let you move on to the next slide.
Great, thank you. Um, so, uh, moving next to municipal facilities. While we've got several projects highlighted on this slide, uh, the one in particular that we'd like to note tonight is the new fire station 71, um, or FC027. And, uh, if, uh, folks are following along in their proposed CIP document in the book, it's on page 38. Um, so the new fire station 71 has a total anticipated project cost of approximately $23 million. Um, and it's intended to be partially funded by fire impact fees. And the intent here is to essentially use all of the available fire impact fees that are available at the time that the project moves forward. Um, that said, the estimated 2022 beginning balance of fire impact fees is only about $1.7 million. Um, and while that will grow between now and when the project is anticipated to really get underway in earnest, it, uh, it won't grow to the $23 million anticipated, um, project cost. So any further funding source will be, uh, so, uh, another funding source will be needed here if the project is to go forward as planned. Um, and further analysis will also be needed this year in 2021 to determine how much we might spend even before year-end this year. Um, especially keeping an eye to, um, to, that the, some of these fire impact fees are set to hit that 10-year limit by the end of this year. Um, this is also the reason why the project doesn't show any fire impact fee revenue in the CIP document on that project page. Um, we'll need to figure out how much fire impact fee revenue will be spent this year to know then how much will be available for the project in 2024. And we'll also have another CIP between now and 2024, um, so we'll have a little time to figure that out as well. Um, and, uh, again, the feedback that we're really looking for this evening is if the council is, uh, is okay with this mix of projects and funding sources for municipal facilities. Um, and, uh, again, we've got department staff as well if, uh, if there are, um, project-specific questions. So I may pause there again, uh, Councilmember Walsh.
Okay, and I see a question from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Chris Ray. Um, Susie, I'm, was looking through the detail, and I noticed on many of our, uh, facility, our city facilities, uh, projects, including the HVAC and the roof, uh, replacement, that we were going to be using, um, facilities, um, mitigation funding. A, is that correct? And then I'll, I'll fault, do my follow-on if I'm correct there.
Sure, uh, this is Susie. I can, um, take a stab at this question. Um, so, uh, we're calling it general government mitigation dollars. But, um, for these projects in particular, it's really that bucket of money from, uh, the, uh, I apologize, I do not remember which development it was from, but it was that, that $5 million bucket from, um, from, uh, a few years back that, uh, that does, we have since learned, does not actually age and can be used for really any general government building.
So, um, many of the, and this is, you may have just answered my question, but many of the mitigations need to be about creating new capacity, not maintaining existing capacity. And these projects look like we're using the funding to maintain existing capacity. So these mitigation funds are not restricted, as are many of the others. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, this is Susie. Uh, that's correct. So, uh, this was, uh, a past, um, a, a past activity that at, at some point in the last few years, the, that, that $5 million was converted to this bucket of mitigation dollars. So it, it was, it, it is mitigation dollars in name only. Um, it does not, uh, it is not restricted to capacity building, and it does not, uh, expire. Um, and it, it does not, uh, have to be spent after 10 years, or within 10 years.
Great, thank you.
And I'll just jump in. Was that the Lakeside DA?
Gosh, uh, thank you.
Yep, I, I just, I had to look it up to think about it, but I wanted to throw it in there. Uh, Councilmember Martz, you have a question?
Yeah, hi. What's, uh, FC020 parking building expansion?
Uh, for that one, I would like to phone a friend, um, and I will phone, uh, Harvey Walker, who I, uh, I see is, uh, is in the meeting tonight.
Good evening. Um, yeah, this is Harvey Walker. I manage the Storm and Sewer Division in Public Works Operations. Um, our parking building currently is used for, um, housing vehicles that, uh, need to be protected from freezing. And as the city's grown, we've added vehicles to the fleet. And so, um, in order to accommodate some of the newer vehicles and, uh, vehicles we hope to acquire here in the next few years, we need to, uh, expand this building. That's seven bays, so basically double it in size.
Can I, can I, can I ask a dumb question? Coming from Minnesota, where it gets to 40 below zero, what freezes on our vehicles?
Oh, well, we have several, uh, um, pieces of equipment that hold water. Um, so like our, our jetter, vector trucks, um, they have large water tanks, and it's quite a process to winterize them. And so we use them most of the winter. You know, we're not below freezing except for night, uh, typically. So, um, we try to keep the crews working all winter long, uh, here in this state. Uh, so we don't winterize them every night or anything like that. It's, it's quite a process. Um, there's also the sweeper uses water, and there's, uh, we've got a previous pavement cleaning machine, and there's some other vehicles that, that also have, hold water typically.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll wait a moment and see if we've got any other facilities questions coming up here. And yep, Councilmember Goodman?
I'm sorry, this is a clarification question again. Um, the Lakeside DA, um, money was mentioned, and I didn't catch the, um, I didn't catch the, uh, all of that. So can you, Susie, summarize if there, that money's included in proposed sources of monies for these projects, please? Uh, yes, this is Susie. Um, thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Uh, yes. So really anywhere in the document where it says that it's using, um, general government mitigation, or at least that's as we're calling it in the document, um, it's referring to that bucket of money. Um, the, there aren't any, uh, any facility projects that are anticipated to draw on mitigation dollars that, that do age and that, that are subject to that, um, capacity building aspect. Do you recall what the DA said specifically, that money's to be used for? I believe so. This is Susie. I believe so, but I may phone a friend, um, in Deputy City Administrator Snyder, uh, if she wants to add anything further. Well, I don't know that we have to look it up, but I was just, if you need, that'd be great. I mean, I can look it up too, but anyway. We, um, I'm also, I apologize. I'm also happy to, uh, follow up with the council, um, to provide any, any, uh, additional detail on that piece as well. Great, thank you.
Deputy City Administrator Snyder, do you want to do a quick thing here, or do you just want to do an update over email?
Uh, sure, Councilmember Walsh. This will just take 30 seconds. Uh, with the Lakeside Development Agreement, they, um, Lakeside agreed to essentially a gift to the city for any community or civic purpose, and that gift was, as Susie outlined, of $5 million. And that's why it's not mitigation funding in the way that we think about mitigation funding. So that funding has a wider purpose of eligible uses based on the Lakeside Development Agreement. And, um, we can send council a link to that document if they want to see the specific language. Uh, but there are a, a wide, uh, wide variety of uses that are eligible for this fund, and as Susie indicated earlier, are not, uh, subject to that 10-year limit like mitigation dollars are.
Okay, and Councilmember Goodman, are you satisfied on that area? Any other questions?
Yep, I'm looking it up. Thank you.
Fantastic. I knew you would. Uh, Council President Hunt, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, this is Council President Hunt. I had some follow-up questions on, um, the parking building expansion project FC020. Um, two questions. One is, uh, what are we doing currently with the vehicles that, um, that are, that since we don't have those parking bays currently? And then, um, the second question is, I noticed in the project criteria matrix for this one that it says the project has dedicated funding, but the funding, the majority of the funding seems to be from utility-supported debt or utility fund balance. And so I wanted to clarify that that funding could be used for other applicable projects.
Um, thank you, uh, Council President Hunt. This is Susie. Um, I may take that funding source question, um, and then feel, uh, uh, phone a friend on the, on the other piece. Um, that is correct. You, those utility revenues can be used, um, for other projects. Um, so I will ask, uh, Harvey Walker if he can hop back on for the other question.
Sure, uh, Councilmember Hunt. Uh, currently, we do, um, kind of shuffle the vehicles around. So, um, we, uh, typically run into trouble during snow operations, where we also try to keep the sanders from freezing overnight, uh, full of sand and salt and ready to go. And then we have to move, um, some of the vector trucks into the fleet building and winterize the vector truck. And, but we do, we kind of shuffle them around, and, um, most of the time, we have enough parking, uh, currently. But it, which operations would be much more efficient if we had a little bit more room.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Going to take a moment, and I think we're through with questions for, uh, Councilmember Goodman has a comment?
Well, can I, it is a comment. Can I, just wanted to follow up, and the language in the Lakeside DA says, um, it's $5 million for governmental facilities and community benefits. Um, so I have thoughts about that, but I will save it till later. Thanks.
Okay, fantastic. Um, and I don't see any other comments there, though. Um, Clerk Aggers did mention, please use all panelists for the comment question queue. So if anybody had put in a request for a question, and I have not called your name, it's because you sent it to the host and not all panelists, so I haven't seen it. But I'm seeing nobody come up and update that. So, Susie, let's go ahead and move on to the next slide.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Um, so moving on to parks and trails. So we'll be going into a bit more detail on these projects, um, in anticipation of potentially a bit more robust of a conversation than, um, some of the smaller asset categories that we've, we've already seen tonight. Um, so the first project that, the park and trail project that we'd like to highlight in, uh, from this proposed CIP is the Dog Park, um, or PK018. Um, and as a note for anyone that is following along in their CIP document, um, in the remaining project slides, um, we've got the project, or the page number down in that bottom right-hand corner. Um, so this project is on page 48 of the proposed document. Um, this, this project, the Dog Park, will create an off-leash dog park. Um, the precise scope of this project will be informed by feedback from the 2021 and 2022 Dog Park Tour currently underway, um, as well as further community engagement. And as you can see from the table here, uh, which is really, uh, the same table that's in the proposed document, the project is anticipated to be funded by, uh, the King County Parks Levy, along with park impact fees. Um, and, uh, again, I'm happy to, to pause here if there are any, uh, questions on this particular project.
I'm not seeing, oh, there we go. Councilmember De Michelle?
Uh, thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. Just a quick question. Uh, we do not have a site for this project yet, right?
Uh, I see, this is Susie. I see Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Walling has, uh, turned his camera on, so I will defer to him.
Yeah, good evening, Councilmember De Michelle. Thanks for the question. Good evening, everyone. Um, we have a site, um, at Tibbetts Valley Park that was identified as we went through a community engagement process. Uh, knowing we have, um, some master planning work to complete at Tibbetts Valley Park, um, and some planning and permitting work to do, um, and then like we said in the narrative, uh, learning what we learned from the community with our Dog Park Tour. Um, uh, we want to be open to, to engagement and, and learning, um, how those parks are functioning and being used. And, and should this, um, be located at Tibbetts Valley Park? Uh, should it be the same size? Should we be looking maybe at multiple dog parks? Um, uh, there's a number of. Um, uh, there's a number of things that we can learn as the community uses these, um, off-leash spaces throughout our, our system in the coming years. So we want to be open to, to engagement.
I, I think my question was, will the, if it's at a different site or does the site play into the cost of the total project?
Good question. Uh, it, it may, um, again, as a planning document, this is not, uh, the proposed funding and per twenty twenty-four is not a, uh, design-informed cost estimate. It's, it's a conceptual cost, uh, estimate at this point. Uh, we would assume utilizing some property we already own. Um, if we needed to be in more of a land acquisition, um, uh, need, uh, this project could, could cost more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and it looks like we've got a question from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Um, so I looked back at the previous, uh, CIP because, um, I was kind of curious about the Dog Park. And I, I was a little bit surprised when I noted that, um, our estimate in, uh, the last CIP was for seventy thousand dollars, um, all up. And now we're almost, uh, ten times that, at least nine times that at, uh, at five hundred and eighty. Um, and I was just kind of curious what, uh, what happened to make Dog Parts so much more expensive in the last couple of years?
So Councilmember Ray, great question. Are you referring to the seventy thousand that was, um, in the adopted budget?
I'm talking about seventy thousand was in the last CIP.
So there was addition, there were, there was funds already appropriated towards the project. So that were going to be carried forward or assumed carried forward that we weren't asking again. Um, the latest estimate for Tibbetts Valley Park, what we had, what we were trying to construct at Tibbetts Valley Park was about a two hundred thousand dollar endeavor. Uh, that was going to take a lot of creativity and ingenuity, uh, to get that done, a lot of sweat equity. Um, as we've learned more about that site, as we've learned more about, um, uh, what we would need to do in terms of mitigating some issues on that site specifically. Um, uh, we, as a planning document, want to be, um, um, is transparent in what the cost might be. So I don't know that the cost of the project expanded. I think it's just, um, trying to be realistic and pragmatic as we plan. As this is a planning document for, um, a Dog Park that, um, of size and scale, whether it's one location or maybe, um, two locations of smaller Dog Parks, um, what, what we should plan to, uh, to afford to get that done. Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions on this particular slide, so I'll let you go to the next one.
Great, thank you. Uh, this is Suzy again. Um, the next park and trail project we'd like to highlight here is Veterans Memorial Field Depot Park and Pedestrian Park, which is PK oh four one. Um, and it's on page fifty-four if you're following along in the book. Um, this project will create a comprehensive master plan to unify these parks, create gathering spaces and expand recreational opportunities. And the proposed Phase One here in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three will be focused on the pedestrian park. Um, as you can see from the table here, the project is anticipated to be funded by REIT along with park impact fees. Um, and, uh, I am glad that Director Walling has not gone far in case there are any questions on, on this particular project.
Okay, it looks like we're going to start out questions with Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Similar to Council Deputy President Ray's question on the last one. This, um, in our twenty twenty CIP, this total project cost was three point eight million. And now the total project cost in the future years is fifteen million. Um, so there has been a big change in the same project from two years ago when we did the CIP to now. Um, so I, I'm wondering about that. And I'm also wondering about the area of pedestrian park and how, how doing improvements to that fits into the fact, in the next couple of years, fits into the facts that we're also going to be using City Hall differently, um, potentially based on our conversation last night. Um, and this is right next to City Hall.
Yeah, thank you for those questions. I, I'll start with, um, I guess the project in its entirety. As, as we, um, before COVID, um, before the pandemic, had initiated some community engagement around master planning of this site as well as Tibbetts Valley Park and the Squaw Creek Corridor, certainly becoming more informed with, um, not only community interest, but opportunity, um, to really unify these spaces, uh, to really activate, um, uh, the depot, um, to activate Veterans Memorial Park, uh, to really, um, have this become the central gathering space, a central park that really supports historical downtown and Front Street. Um, I think we're recognizing this is going to be a multiple phased project over multiple years. So as a planning document, I think this is our effort to try and demonstrate, um, that's not all going to get done in, in this six-year term. So, um, going to what is proposed as, as Phase One is pedestrian park. Uh, again, trying to, um, meet, uh, some of the criteria of what's realistic, what's financially realistic, what's project-ready? Um, uh, what can we do and afford to do in, in the next couple of years? Uh, pedestrian park is a strong candidate, um, as that is really the gateway into, um, these unified spaces. It's, it's the area that, um, this complex of parks touches Front Street. It, it really has a, a key, um, anchor and corner to a main intersection of, of Old Town, Sunset and Front Street. Um, um, as we look to, um, do public engagement to design this, um, and eventually construct it, uh, we see it as a, a space that's going to have great economic development benefits. Um, how neighboring restaurants might be able to use this, how might, this might be a space that, again, supports a number of informal and, and formal type events. Um, what, how we use City Hall as a municipal building, um, and what this space could be, I, I think, could be, uh, very complimentary um, in terms of, um, as we start, um, sort of envisioning these public spaces to, to really support, um, historical downtown in a more, um, unified and, and, um, effective way.
Okay, Council President Hunt, did you get the answer to the question you were asking?
Well, um, this, so the second question was really if we're thinking about City Hall and North, uh, City Hall, um, on Sunset being used differently for the next couple of years. We had a conversation about parking and, and that too. Um, and this is directly next to that, just concerns, I guess, that there will be a change of use in that. And then there's potentially this, uh, project to, um, that would take place in the park that's right there. And I think it's a fairly small park, so I think it would be right next to this area. So it's a, it's a concern. I didn't, I think, um, maybe having more information about how the plans are complementary offline would be helpful for me. Thanks.
duly noted. Thanks.
Um, and this is Suzy, and I, I may, uh, just add one more piece here and I, uh, I will of course allow if anyone, um, wants to, uh, step in as well. But, um, the, and the timing on this too, uh, is that, that construction piece, um, primarily happens in twenty twenty-three as well. And my understanding with the, um, anticipated facilities, um, looking ahead is that, uh, that, 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 that in, this interim is Phase One, um, of the facilities plan would primarily be, uh, this year and into twenty twenty-two, but, um, uh, not necessarily into twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and the next question is Councilmember Marts.
Yeah, I, I have a, I have a, I guess, a process question concern. Um, you know, what I'm seeing here compared to the twenty twenty CIP is an acceleration of some projects and a deep deceleration of other projects. Um, that represents really a substantial policy change. So I have concerns, we're, we're sort of, and I, and I realize we're going to get to a point where you're going to say, do you think that these generally reflect, um, the policies of the council? But this is a good example, right? In the twenty twenty CIP, uh, the bulk of this work didn't occur until twenty twenty-four. Um, it's only moving it up a year, but you know, we're going to get to other items later in the evening. They're going to get moved way, way back. And I just, I have a concern, you know, the council, the last time we looked at big ticket capital programs, we had a holistic view. And we said, here are, you know, of the dozen major projects out there, here's the stack ranking that's most important to us. And I'm really concerned that tonight's conversation doesn't reflect that conversation, nor does it reflect a, uh, uh, a revisiting of that conversation with the current council. Thanks.
Uh, sure. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Marts. This is Suzy again. I may take a, uh, brief stab at answering this question and see if perhaps City Administrator Bob Quitz wants to jump in. But I know with this CIP in particular, we were very, very focused on what we could afford with existing revenue. So as opposed to the last CIP when we had anticipated potentially more revenues, especially looking at some of the transportation projects. The last CIP, of course, assumed, um, inherent in the project proposed, um, that transportation benefit district sales tax. So looking, uh, at, at some of those projects, for example, many of those did get moved out to future years because that funding source that had been anticipated in the last CIP, um, we, we obviously did not have that CBD sales tax on the ballot last year. Um, so that, I, I believe is, is many of the reasons why projects were pushed out. Um, many of the projects, uh, or some, the, the projects that were moved up, um, in, in some cases were due to, um, community engagement, hearing that it, it was a high priority. Some of them, um, were due to revenues becoming available such as grants. Um, and it, it's really project to project. It's, it's, um, there could be unique reasons for it. Um, and, um, and taking your point that, uh, that, that ranking i- is difficult to decipher within the document. It's certainly something that, um, we, we heard in the last presentation as well that the, uh, selection criteria matrix is a stepping stone toward potentially a more robust ranking system in future years. Um, that would certainly take, uh, a bit more time and a bit more engagement with, um, the, the various stakeholders to determine what that larger selection criteria model might look like. Um, and I see City Administrator Bob Quitz has turned his camera on, so I, uh, will see if he would like to add anything here.
Yes, uh, thank you, Ms. Montal. Members of the council, good evening. Uh, I, I think Suzy covered it pretty well. I'll just highlight the very first part that she said, and that is that we're trying to, uh, make the projects as real as possible. Uh, for those that have funding in the first, uh, few years, we really want to focus on that. Um, I think the, the, the staff and, uh, the city in general has been appropriately criticized sometimes of, of identifying projects, uh, and then having those projects not happen. And I think a big part of that is money. And so I think what you're seeing, uh, and Suzy elaborated much more completely. But I think largely we're trying to make sure that what you're approving and what you're seeing, uh, certainly in the first years of this plan, gets built and done and benefits the community. So, um, hopefully, Councilmember Marts, that answers your question. Um, as we go through this, if there are specific projects that you or other members of the council are concerned about that aren't, uh, funded, we can certainly dive, uh, further into that. But I think that kind of summarizes where we're coming from.
Okay, and question from Councilmember Goodman.
Um, thank you. So, um, I guess my question here is about how the, what was initially envisioned as sort of non-phased, um, in the prior CIP, and now it's Phase One. And so, and we have obviously then future phases. So how does Phase One, um, play with Phase Two? And what is Phase Two? And what is the public process for determining that we have a fifteen million dollar capital project? I'm just, I'm just confused. And so I, um, I don't know that we need to dive into it tonight, but, um, uh, yeah, I'm just kind of confused about how we got to fifteen million.
Sure, uh, and this is Suzy again. And I'll, I'll defer to Director Walling on if he would like to address it tonight or, um, if, if it would be easier if we came back to the council on that item as well.
I would be happy to come back. If I could just give a, a quick response to that, that's a really good question, Councilmember Goodman. Um, and I don't have the twenty twenty CIP right in front of me. I'll take a look. But I, I, I would, I would venture to say it was anticipated that that was not going to be a single-phase project either. This was always going to be seen as a multi-phase project, uh, but I will confirm that. I, you know, we've, again, initiated a master planning effort with the community. Uh, that master planning effort is anticipated to begin again, as we're now coming out of the pandemic here in the latter part of this year. That engagement effort, um, is going to inform really that the scoping of this, um, of this project and what's, what moves forward into what would be anticipated as design in twenty twenty-two and then construction in twenty twenty-three. So, um, engagement is still a, a critical part of this, uh, project and scoping this project. But happy to come back with a little bit more clarity as to, um, comparison of the twenty twenty CIP and what's proposed in the twenty twenty-two CIP for these projects. And, and I could even offer probably for the Tibbetts Valley Park project as well as the Creek Corridor project that were these big anchor projects that we were pretty certain were going to be phased and multi-year projects.
Um, thank you. I think I would appreciate that. Um, and it maybe sounds like there's enough questions on some of these that have changed, um, that that would be appropriate. Um, certainly my memory's not perfect and there's a lot of stuff that goes on and we hear about a lot and learn about a lot, and it's not possible for us to remember everything. So, um, certainly I may have forgotten some steps along the way, but, um, it seems like I'm not the only one that was a little surprised. Thank you.
Yeah, if, if I could just emphasize one more thing, Suzy, forgive me. Um, also, these, this project as well as those two other anchor projects I mentioned, and really all the projects that are in the park CIP, are really also born out of very exhaustive community effort and prioritization that went on with the park strategic plan. Uh, so in the park, adopted park strategic plan, we identified near-term priority projects through a, through a, a ranking system. Those near-term projects were, i- is, is what is the foundation of not only this project, but, um, all of the parks and trail CIP projects.
Great. Oh, that's very useful and I appreciate, um, learning more about it. Thank you very much.
Well, I'll chime in with questions here too. I also would like to see in the park strategic plan how this talked about phasing, um, because I don't remember a concept of phasing and I have concerns about the idea of planning and constructing one portion of the park in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and then the remainder of fifteen million in future years after twenty twenty-seven. So I would be interested in seeing that. And then also, eh, with this concept of, uh, pedestrian park as a Phase One, I'm wondering what the engagement with the, uh, nearby businesses has been, since that really does border quite on Jax and, um, some of the other businesses there. And I think I just took Councilmember Hall's question. So at this point, I'm, oh, Councilmember Marts' question.
Um, I just, I want to make sure, um, if I heard it right, do we have, uh, a set of requirements or a specification for Phase One of PK oh four one currently?
A set of specifications, like design specifications, Councilmember?
A set of what, of what we want to do. If we have fifteen point two million dollars worth of work, what's the work we want to get done? What it, whether, I, in engineering, we call it a system requirement, uh, I, whatever you call it, the, the bucket of work that we want to get done with one point four million dollars in twenty twenty-three.
It's not, I, I would say it's not an engineered set of, of specifications at this point, no.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not talking about technical drawings. I'm talking about a document that says, we've got fifty things we want to get done with our fifteen point two million dollars. Here's the eight things we can get done with one point four million.
We, we don't have that document yet. That is a document that would be completed with as the, the master plan process for, uh, this work, um, gets back underway, um, uh, the second half of this year. The work that we have initiated with Methune and we, we paused as we've, um, been navigating through the pandemic. Um, that, that, I believe that project, you might recall this, was presented to you, sort of where we're at with community engagement on that master planning effort. I believe the month before the pandemic hit, February of, of twenty nineteen, uh, we presented where we're at with that project. But that work would need to be completed to really understand. But that work would need to be completed to really understand the scope of what we're, the community would like to get done for this portion of the park.
Thank you.
Okay, the questions keep popping up, and so I'm going to talk for a moment and see if anybody else comes up. Looks like we might be safe to go on to the next slide.
Great, thank you. This is Suzy. And I may just take this, this moment to add one more point as well, that many of these projects, the, when there's construction anticipated in, in even 2022 and 2023, some of that is also dependent on the community engagement that will happen between now and then. And it's dependent on the design work that may happen in earlier years as well. And I don't mean that to, as a follow-on to the last question, it just as a, it's more of a point of clarification as we look at these other projects as well. So the next park and trail project that we'd like to highlight here is the Wayfinding and Park signage, or PK044, which is on page 57 of the document. This project will standardize and expand signage to improve user experience throughout Isaklaus Parks, Trails, and open spaces. As you can see from the table here, this project is anticipated to primarily be funded by REIT, but as well as a developer contribution in 2022. And I will, again, take this opportunity to pause if there are any questions on this particular project.
Okay, there we go. Council President Hunt, question.
Thanks. This is Council President Hunt. I don't have this question for all of the projects, but I do have a similar question to the last one on this project. Previously, I'm basically wondering why we have costs in every year on the CIP for this wayfinding, and it seems a pretty substantial constant cost across all the years, which it wasn't previously. And then also, I wondered if that has to do with the branding issue. And then I have one quick follow-up, too.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I will, again, phone a friend, in Director Wolling, on that question.
And I apologize, I had a pretty major glitch, so I missed a bulk of that question, Council President Hunt.
So this is another project that seems to have increased a lot in costs, and also now it's every year, this cost of, you know, total expenses, 368,020 in 2022, then 422,000 in 2023, keeps getting bigger also in those years. So I, just wondering why it costs this much. It didn't cost that much in the previous CIP. And also, it's like a cost going out into the future that seems quite high. And then I have a follow-up after that.
Okay. So, yeah, again, as a planning document, as we're trying to look at doing some financial planning, we're being informed by the community engagement that we've been doing with wayfinding, and also looking at the scope of this. This would be, this would be signage not only within our parks and trails, but this would also be gateway signage through our major entries into the city and other elements. So as we recognize that's probably not going to be a one-and-done, we're not going to just do it all at once, we're demonstrating and establishing a program that would anticipate implementing those new signages, signs, whether it's gateway signage, the wayfinding signage on rights-of-way, wayfinding signage within trails, our parks and city facility signs would happen over multiple years. And so we're trying to demonstrate that through this method. I point out, we actually are still in community engagement as our next round of community surveys will be launched the end of this week, and will go through May, as we're working with the community on various sign concepts for this.
Okay, thank you. My follow-up question is, the branding of the city does sometimes change, logo styles change. And I noticed that this is parking monument, also it's a large amount of money. And so I just wondered, is, if that's been considered, and if there's a way to do the signage in a way that you would be able to update it without continuing to spend this much money on wayfinding?
Yeah, it's a great question. This has very, very much been a multi-departmental effort. So communications has been a key part of this. And yeah, we are looking at both sign concepts and the capability to have this be a timeless look. This wouldn't include a city logo that if it was changed out, we would need to swap that out. So a lot of that, those factors are going to be considered into the design.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we've got a question from Councilmember Marks.
So my question may be for the Chair of tonight's meeting. This represents a tenfold increase over the 2020 five-year funding for PK044. This isn't a, this isn't a tweak, this is a whole-scale revamping of our CIP and elements with big winners and big losers. We used to do this in committee, and we poured over these things, right? We went over line by line by line, and we, and we looked at what the evidence was. And the level of conversation we're having tonight, I'm really uncomfortable with the level of significant policy change this conversation represents tonight in things like increasing this by a factor of 10. I don't know what to do with my concern, but it's, it's really, this is such a substantial difference. And I, I get that we want to do the things that we can do, but how can this possibly be 10 times what it was, what we thought it would be two years ago? Two years ago, we thought it was $154,000. So, and I don't say that because I don't believe that you've done outreach, but, I mean, at the very least, I would think we would take a big look at, like, what are the big winners and what are the big losers in the, in the delta from the 2020 and why it is? And we're just, we're not having that conversation tonight. So I don't, I don't know exactly what the solution is, Madam Chair, but this, this process this evening, I don't think is, I don't think we're giving these things the level of rigor they need, given the substantial financial changes that we're talking about. Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Marks, I share your concerns. And so perhaps City Administrator Bob Kowits is looking at the calendar of our proposed CIP review, is there space? And I don't know whether this is the right time to talk about it. You're hearing from two councilmembers that have that concern, but I don't know if that's overarching.
Councilmember Walsh, members of the council, I think part of the process we're going through tonight is to get the feedback that we're hearing. We took an approach with the CIP that I think was a little different than we have in previous years. And so I think that has brought about some changes. The community engagement that we've had, but we've been talking a lot about the parks projects, you know, we're doing intense community engagement on these parks projects. And I think what we're hearing from the community is the desire to make additional investments. I think it's a very fair question for us to come back to at the next meeting, if you'd like, with a comparison between the 2020 and 2022 changes. But, you know, that's part of the reason this is done, I think, every two years, is to, you know, to reevaluate. It's a planning document. We say it over and over again. But I think what, that's part of what happens when you plan, is that plans change. So we'll be happy to break those down. We can, we can speak to that at, if not your next meeting, the meeting after that, and be able to make those explanations. But again, I really want to reinforce that what you're seeing is certainly not capricious. It's certainly something that we have tried to, again, focus on, those community needs. You know, parks especially, again, my year and a half here, this community really wants to see these improvements. And I think your staff, rather than giving you numbers that we'll never be able to fund or putting them into out years, we're trying to be as realistic as we can. So if you allow us to continue to walk through the projects, and if you could provide us any additional feedback on substance of the specific projects or questions, you know, we'll come back and, and frame the discussions so that you can see those comparisons in a more direct way. If that, does that answer that concern, Councilmember Walsh?
I think, I won't speak for Councilmember Marks, but I'm concerned about getting far through the process with having kind of this policy question or concern that a sign-off or feedback here becomes a de facto, we're moving forward with some of these ideas. But again, that's just my feedback.
And I don't think, Councilmember, we're looking for anything that's de facto. I think we are, you're giving us exactly what we expected to hear this evening. So, you know, if we can continue to go through the projects, raise the concerns, and we'll be able to address them as needed.
Okay. Next, we have a comment from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Chris Ray. If I can make a suggestion, and I think this is where the city administrator was going, let's continue to push through the material that we got presented in front of us. But at the end of the meeting, while we're going through and talking about our overall comments about the CIP, let us spend a little more time talking about the process to get to done and get a sense of the body, if we are on the right track with how we are planning to get to done with this, or if we need to do a little bit of rethinking about how to move this forward. So that would be my suggestion for moving forward, so we can get through this material. And then, but let's save time at the end to talk through this.
Okay, it sounds like there's definitely an interest to do so at the end. So any other questions on wayfinding and park signage? Not seeing any, so Suzy, I'll let you move on to the next slide.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Walsh. The final park and trail project that we'd like to highlight tonight is the Trail Repair Program, which is TLO21, which is on page 64 of the document. And this is a new annual project that was not in the last CIP, to fund maintenance and trail repair as needed throughout Isaklaus Trail System. It's intended to, to augment the park operations cost in the annual operating budget. So as you can see from the table here, the project is anticipated to be funded by REIT. And I, one comparison that I would, I would draw to a project like this is, in the last CIP, and again, in this one, there's projects like the small strategic improvements on the street side, where there are small investments, where each year you can kind of take a look at what are the major priorities within that year, what's popped up? That there's, there's dedicated funding for each year that is available for when those, the unanticipated pieces pop up. So with that, I will, again, pause if there are any questions on this particular project.
I'm waiting to see if any questions pop up, and so far, there are none. Okay, let's go on to the next slide.
Great, thank you. So I would amend this slide slightly based on the discussion we've had this evening, that the discussion is really if there's any sort of feedback that the council would have on, on the, in this case, the park and trail projects that are proposed in the CIP, that if there's additional information that we can provide to help make these decisions, or if there are any additional questions, or just really general thoughts around, general feedback on the project mix, timing, and funding strategy for these proposed park and trail projects.
Okay, we have a comment from Councilmember Marks.
So, and it's, first, first let me, a little continuation on the earlier conversation. You know, when we get to a conversation at a future council meeting about, you know, changes, proposed changes in our CIP philosophy, magnitudes matter, right? This, this Trail Repair Program is 3% the size of the wayfinding package, right? So it's, you know, and it's a great idea, but, you know, that's going to be, that needs to be a big part of the conversation. Like, I would hate to have as much debate over a $50,000 line item as we have over a $1.5 million line item. So that's a, that's a comment. And since we're at the point where we're discussing policy, I, some of my comments are really forward-thinking to the conversation we're going to have later about TRO28. When you ask, am I comfortable with this mix? I'm just going to give you the spoiler, and I think we have to do TRO28, and we can't wait seven years to do it. So I look at some of the stuff here, and I don't think that stuff is more important than getting sidewalks out to South Cove. So that's, and that's just going to be a recurring motif for me this evening. So I can't really evaluate these things independent of the fact that we're pushing out TRO28, something we promised the community we would do over and over again, over the last 15 years. Thanks.
Okay, I am looking to see if there are any other questions on park and trail projects. And while I'm waiting, I'll just go ahead and comment on mine. There's a huge change in volume on some of the projects that were not mentioned here. And I want the public to know that the items that are highlighted are not the only ones in the parks and trail area for our capital improvement plan. The Valley Trail and Creekside Sensitive Land acquisitions for the previous CIP for the six years was 9.4 million, and for this six-year CIP is 3.3 million. And similarly, Hillside Acquisition is cut in half. I'm wondering whether that was an intentional kind of strategic change? Are we just finding that there isn't land to acquire? Have we spent this money that's been planned out in previous CIPs and budgeted in our budgets? And is that why this has changed? What, what's going on in that area?
This is Suzy. Thank you for that question. I may take a brief stab at this and then see if Director Wolling wants to add anything. But I know in particular with some of the, the land acquisition projects, we had heard from the council, as well as the community, that without, in some cases, without lands identified, that in some cases, in particular with the, I believe it's the Valley Trail and Creekside Acquisition, that much of that planning process is based on building up a reserve so that when the land becomes available, the revenues are available. But also, that in order to receive that, those funds from the county, that we need to be able to match it each year with our own funding, and that's how we build up the balance for a project like that. And with these as well, some of these acquisitions, I believe in the last CIP also assumed that they would be supported by general fund-backed debt service, that we are not including in this CIP, any new general fund-supported debt. So those are some of my preliminary thoughts, but I would certainly defer to Director Wolling if he has anything there to add as well.
Similar, Suzy, thank you, and great question, Councilmember Walsh. Yeah, I think that a lot of this had to do with revenue and affordability, and some of the revenues that were proposed in the prior one, both grant funds, as well as councilmatic debt, were not necessarily revenue sources that were actionable or felt realistic.
Okay, and then I see that Director Goldberg has a comment in there. I'm wondering if that's on this specific item, and if we can go to that before Council President Hunt's question. Director Goldberg? You're still muted, Beth.
Just wanted to add, sorry about that. Just wanted to add on the debt service comment, and this underscores why this is a planning document and, and things can morph over time. Subsequent to, or in relation to the last CIP being adopted, as well as the subsequent budget, the council made the decision to accelerate Providence Point and not pursue the TBD. and not pursue the TBD sales tax revenue. In order to accelerate the funding of Providence Point, we had to redirect the general fund debt service to that project that had been originally contemplated for some of these other projects. I just wanted to remind the council of that history.
Okay, and then going back to Council President Hunt for a question.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. On the, on the Creek Corridor project, which is P K zero forty-five, in the explanation that was just given, which I, I think we've talked about in previous years too, that we need to have some money to, in each year, set aside in case of the possibility of an acquisition and to be eligible for other funding. I think we have heard that before, and I would then wonder why we are, we do have a year with no funding, and in that case, what would happen, which is twenty twenty-three on P K zero forty-five? Now we don't have funding for that one particular year.
If it's all, thank you for that question, Council President Hunt. If it's all right, that one might take a little more digging into to get you a comprehensive answer. If it's all right, I would like to take that question.
Yeah, that's fine, just, I think, thank you, that's fine. I think it, it also, for me, relates back to the, the difference. If there's a different strategy for, you know, putting a, a smaller amount of money in these acquisitions, in the planning document for these acquisitions, which Councilmember Walsh also noticed. And then we also have this gap, which wasn't there in that year previously, just with like a understanding of the strategy there, and also what it would mean for acquisitions for that year. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then we have a comment from Councilmember Hall.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Walsh, this is Councilmember Hall. Thoughts, thoughts aren't completely fully synced yet, but I did just want to say that I don't think I fully agree with a lot of the comments that have been said tonight. I feel somewhat comfortable with this mix of projects and timing. By going through the twenty twenty CIP and looking at the twenty twenty-two proposal, it seems like a lot of the projects that have been moved up, you know, we've learned more about how much it's going to cost by just learning more about the projects and the specificity of projects, and also connecting with the community. And in those cases, you know, pushed them farther in the timeline, and then highlighted projects that are more community-facing, things that we can actually get accomplished. You know, coming out of a pandemic, it seems to me that it would be a benefit to the community to see projects come up quicker, so those projects would be, I think, a good thing to prioritize. Anyways, my thoughts were kind of half-baked there, but I did just want to say that I feel a little bit more comfortable than the rest of my colleagues about this current mix of projects and the funding. Thanks.
And we have a comment from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh, Chris Ray. I think this is an interesting question about, are we, do we think this is the right funding strategy for the proposed parks and trail projects? But I think one of the things I was hearing from Councilmember Marks is, I don't think it's the best approach to talk about things discreetly this way, because, you know, the three million dollars that we're looking at in the next six years to do for signs and wayfinding, that's three million dollars that we could put into transportation projects or into other projects that are typically general fund-funded. So I think we, we, we at some point are going to need to take a step back and look at all of our capital investment and not at just the various chunks of them discreetly. Because we're making, we're not making trade-offs between parks projects, we're making trade-offs between projects across the CIP. And, and we're not having, we haven't had that discussion yet, so I just want to put a placeholder out for that.
If I may, I'm sorry, Councilmember Walsh. I, if it's all right, I'd like to, to add an additional thought there as well that, that's certainly feedback that we are grateful to hear, that getting some guidance on, and, and on where we kind of go from here and what additional information is needed. And I'm certainly looking forward to that discussion later in the, the discussion, later in this presentation. But I would also add that it's one of the reasons that we put this particular group of projects together tonight, that many of these projects draw on the same funding sources, that they'll draw on funding sources such as REIT or, or general fund dollars, perhaps in some of the, the transportation projects coming ahead. So it's, it's really an opportunity in, in putting the utility projects on the agenda for next week, that this week was really to look at the projects comprehensively in all of these asset categories together tonight. And i- if there are projects that would, that the council would prefer to see discussed together, perhaps at a future meeting, that seeing all the projects that might be supported out of a particular funding source, for example, looking at all the projects that are funded by REIT, for example, to look at what some of those trade-offs might be. We're certainly happy to provide that information ahead of another meeting. And I would also flag, it, it, there's, one of the added pieces of complexity here too is that many projects are funded by more than one funding source. So it, it gets a little tricky in, in looking at those trade-offs, that there might be additional dollars in play that are funding projects, but we're, it, it, such as that list of, of REIT funding, if there's anything else like that, we're, we're certainly happy to provide it for future meetings.
And a follow-on comment from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh, Chris Ray. Susie, thank you for that. What I think would be helpful for me recognizing the, that individual projects have different funding streams, but if we could see a matrix, if you will, down one axis is the projects, and across the top is the funding stream, and in the boxes is the, is the dollars. That will give us a quick visual of where the funding's coming from and what the trade-offs might be within a funding source, and, and also if that could provide some also data or indication of what the limitations on the funding source are, such that like general fund is pretty flexible, but REIT two is transportation only. You know, parks funding, you know, or parks grants, that's, you know, that's parks only. So it'll give us some more data with which to look at the mix and to optimize the trade-offs between the funding, the limitations on the funding, and what kind of policy direction we're trying to pursue. That'd be super helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Council, Deputy Council President Ray. That is certainly something that we can provide ahead of the next meeting.
And I will get all Excel geek on you and say that I think a stack-ranked chart would be very helpful if you're looking at a graph to see how much of each value is for. I, I like visuals, so anyway, a quick comment from Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Walsh, this is actually just a quick comment for the chair and the clerk, I think we might have lost Councilmember Goodman, so someone should check in with her.
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to her, Councilmember Walsh.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, so at this point, I think I'm seeing that we can move on to transportation.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Walsh, this is Susie again. So moving on to transportation. So like the parks projects, we have a number of projects here that are highlighted. And as we certainly saw with the parks projects, we're, we're also happy to address projects that, that aren't in this highlighted list as well. So the first project that we have highlighted, at least in this presentation, is the, the I ninety crossing between Tenth and Twelfth Ave Northwest, or T R O O three, which is on page one hundred of the document. This project will design a new three-lane I ninety crossing between SR nine hundred and Front Street at a bike lane and a, and a sidewalk on both sides of the street. And as you can see from the table here, the project is anticipated to be supported by state funding in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And that total amount shown there, the three point four million between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, reflects the amount that was requested of the state for the design and early environmental documentation for this project. And I will pause there for, for questions as well.
Okay, Councilmember De Michele?
Thank you, this is Councilmember De Michele. So this really kind of caught my attention because the, the guiding principle for the CIP was that we were dealing with existing revenue, and we don't know if we're getting that grant. And so I was wondering why we are putting that in, and, and so much happened in this last legislative session. So I could be wrong, but I, I thought that the legislature did not adopt a transportation budget yet. So I'm just wondering, why are we, in this particular project, why are we putting in anticipated revenue rather than revenue that we know is existing? So I see, I see City Administrator Bob Quinns is ready to answer that question.
And if I may, Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember De Michele. First, Councilmember Goodman is, is fine. She's lost her computer connection, and we're working on getting her to call in, so just to let you know that. Specifically on this project, the reason we've kind of broke our rule here is because this is really important. And so we want to demonstrate, the administration wants to demonstrate to the council and the community that keeping this project moving forward is important. The, as Councilmember De Michele alluded to, there was not a transportation, a package adopted. There may be that opportunity, may occur sometime in the next few months. We would then look to see where we are at the budget process, and if that money is not available for a grant, I, I know in speaking with Mayor Polly, I think she will challenge us to find money to replace it. So I think we, we want to make sure this is front and center. In talking with many of you as we were preparing the documents, certainly talking to many community members, this is an important project, and so we did not want to lose that.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions on this particular one.
Great.
Excuse me, comment from Councilmember Marks.
The I ninety crossing is important. We will find the money elsewhere if we don't get this grant. That kind of, I, I struggle with how to say this nicely, so I'll just say it. That's the council's purview, that's policy, that's city-level policy. That's not, that should not come from the administration, that should come from the council. You can suggest it, you can argue for it, it's up to this council. We're looking at defunding, again, something that we spent fifteen years promising the residents of Northwest Issaquah that we were going to do. That's important, and that is something that this council said two years ago was the second most important thing that we had in front of us after finishing the, the stoplight in front of Providence Heights. So what is important to this city strategically is the purview of the city council. Thank you.
And Councilmember Walsh, if I could just add, I'm here representing the administration. This is Mayor Polly's CIP, and so I was sharing her thoughts, and certainly anything that's in the CIP is pending the council's approval. But this document is being presented by the administration and the mayor, and she feels very strongly about this.
Okay, let's move on to the next transportation project.
Great, this is Susie again. So the next transportation project that we'd like to highlight tonight is the Twelfth Avenue Northwest and SR nine hundred and Seventeenth Avenue Northwest, or T R zero zero four, which is on page one hundred and one in the document. This project will widen the northbound SR nine hundred and Seventeenth Ave Northwest approach to Twelfth Avenue Northwest and Twelfth Avenue Northwest at SR nine hundred and Northwest Mamish Road. And as you can see from the table here, this project is anticipated to be funded by a state grant in twenty twenty-two. And I'm, I'm happy to pause again here if there, there are any projects, or any questions on this particular project.
And we have a question from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh, Chris Ray. Susie, what hap, I thought that this work was being partly funded as part of the Costco Development Agreement. And I don't, I could be wrong, but I thought that was part of the funding. And then I just can't believe that we can do a significant construction highway project for one point four million dollars. So is this completing some work that's already in flight? Or I feel like I'm missing both a funding stream and a, and a, and a, and expense component of this, unless it's a twenty twenty-one expense that's already been, already been budgeted, and I'm just forgetting about it.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Council President Ray, this is Susie again. I will take a brief stab at this and defer to perhaps John Mortensen, our transportation manager who's got on the call this evening. But I, I believe you are correct that this is the, one of the projects that is funded by, by that developer contribution. And this, this has been a project that has been, been, been going for the last couple of years. And I believe this portion in twenty twenty-two is intended to be in addition to the amounts already appropriated in prior years that we've been carrying forward each year to complete the project. And I will give John Mortensen here a chance to jump in if he has anything else he'd like to add on that, or if I, if I misstated anything.
Susie, you said that absolutely correct, that we have previously budgeted the amount of money for the project, and that we'll just be asking to reauthorize the previously budgeted amounts in order to construct it.
Great, thank you, John.
If I can just ask the follow-on, the state grant, is that a already-approved state grant? Is that an at-risk state grant? Do we have a sense of where that, that last one point four is coming from?
Yes, that one point four is actually going to be about a three million dollar ask to the Transportation Improvement Board, or T I B, and that we will be applying for that this August. In our conversations with the T I B, we do feel like we do have a good shot at having this project get awarded. It was one of the first projects not funded for the last two grant cycles, and so we think we've got a good shot in talking to the T I B. The most important criteria for a growth and development project like this is that it is ready for construction, and that's why we're working hard this year on the design and right-of-way acquisition.
And if the T I B doesn't come through, then we're going to need to find the one point four to fill the gap someplace else if we do this?
The most likely spot would be for, from the traffic impact fees. This project's one hundred percent eligible for the traffic impact fees.
Thanks, John.
And if I, this is Susie again, if I may also jump in. I'm, I admit, I'm shuffling between a couple of CIP books and a budget book. But in the twenty twenty-one budget, as John mentioned, this, this had a three million dollar grant that we were pursuing. The other, there's the, the one point four here, and the other portion of that is, is included in the twenty, is part of the assumptions for the twenty twenty-one budget, in case, just to clarify the, the timing of that piece as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and we've got a comment from Councilmember De Michele.
Oh, thank you, this is Councilmember De Michele. I think for me, I'd like to see consistency in how this is done because when we get to the pavement management program discussion, we're showing deficits every year, and I don't know, I know that, I know that applying for a grant is different than not knowing where other funds are coming from, but we don't know for sure that we're getting this grant, and we don't know for sure that we're getting the grant for the overcrossing. And I think somewhere in here, it should be indicated consistent with what we've been doing with the rest of the CIP. That's just my comment. It just, I think for consistency's sake, we should be reporting those similar, similarly. And then if we think we've got a good shot at a grant, perhaps something in the narrative to clarify that. Just my thought.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. It, it was certainly our intent when we included grants assumptions in, in the document that we were fairly confident that we would be, be awarded them. But that is But that is, we appreciate that feedback, that perhaps that's certainly something we could make more clear in the narrative of each project.
And Councilmember De Michele, I'll go a step further. We'll do it.
Okay, I was just writing that down furiously as feedback. Appreciate it. And seeing no other questions or comments on this one, moving on to the next slide.
And Councilmember Walsh, and Suzy, let me take a stab at the next two because I think the next two are probably the most important to talk about as far as where they sit in this capital plan. So, Suzy, we can go to the next slide. The Newport Way, SR 900, the state route, Southeast 54th Street, and the next one, which is TR 028, the Northwest Semamish Road, non-motorized improvements. As you all know, I'm new here. And so as we were approaching the capital program this year, I spoke with many of you to get a sense of what your big priorities were. And I think, again, in speaking with many of you, really, there were three projects that stood out. There was the under-overcrossing. There was the state route 900 to Southeast 54th Street improvements. And then there was the Northwest Semamish Road non-motorized improvements. But those were projects that many of you, without any kind of prompting, said yes, if we're moving forward with capital projects, those are the important projects for us to move forward with. The challenge with these next two projects has been funding. The discussions that the council's previously had focusing on these important transportation projects, the revenue source was contemplated going to the voters for additional tax. That did not occur. And as we were preparing this capital program, these projects, the TR 022 and the TR 028, really fell to the wayside because there was no money. And so in discussions with Mayor Polly, she also agrees very much so that these are two very important projects. We are putting in money in 2022 to keep these projects going so that there is some funding versus no funding for them. We think it's important to do that. Suzy and the staff can talk more specifically as we go through here, but I just wanted to flag the importance of these two projects, the importance of keeping them moving forward, but also the importance of finding additional dollars in future years. As Councilmember De Michele noted, when we talk about grants, as you look at TR 022, there is money in future years which is not necessarily on account at this point. And so we are going to need to do that. We are going to need to look at other revenue sources. As you look, as we look at the non-motorized project, there's not even contemplated revenue to continue that moving forward. So, you know, this is really important. I think, again, in my conversations with the council, I think there's some general agreement there. We're looking for feedback tonight if this is not going far enough. You know, we would like to move forward with the tax discussions later this year and perhaps go to the voters next year with a formulated plan. If that's not good enough, we need to know because then there's additional changes that we would need to make to defund other projects to keep things going in future years. So, Councilmember Walsh, thank you for indulging me for a quick moment. I just anticipate there will be comments, questions from the council on these two projects. And I wanted to anticipate them to the greatest extent possible to say yes, the administration understands how important these next two projects are. There are funding challenges. We appreciate whatever feedback you have for current year because we want to see, Mayor Polly wants to see these projects move forward for the community.
Great, thank you for that introduction to these two projects. It's certainly an important piece to both of these, the future-year funding aspect. And focusing on the earlier anticipated funding sources for, in particular, for this project for '22 through '24, the grants and the street impact fees. If there are questions on what that is, I'm certainly happy to defer to the project manager. But in particular with that general fund piece in 2022, this project is proposed to receive some general fund funding for the design work in 2022. So these general fund dollars are, in particular for this project and the next one, are proposed to come from a portion of the amount anticipated to come to the city from the American Rescue Plan. And we're proposing this as part of the CIP document. But it's also important to note that there is, of course, other opportunities to decide what that funding is going to be used for. We certainly heard the discussion from the council last night that there are many things that we may want to be using this funding for. And really, by including it here in 2022, the intent is really that if the council, at this point this evening, is comfortable with us including that in the proposed 2022 budget for this project and the next one. And that 2022 budget process will certainly be another opportunity for the council to discuss if those funds should still be used for either of these two projects. The total amount of the, from the American Rescue Plan funding that is proposed in this CIP is $1.25 million. So it would be $750,000 for this project and another $500,000 for the next project, which I'll get to in a moment. And we're calling it general fund dollars here as we would anticipate that these dollars would be intended to replace general fund revenues lost as a result of the pandemic. But it's a bit of a semantic piece. I mean, obviously, those funds can be used for infrastructure investments. So it's really just how we would describe the use of those funds. But ultimately, they would be used for these two projects, should the council desire to use them as such. And that might be a good opportunity for me to pause again for any questions on this particular project.
Okay, we've got one from Councilmember Marx.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What do we get for $6 million? What does this road look, how does this road look different from today in 2027?
I will, I would just clarify that the $6 million that you referenced, is that the difference between the revenues in '26 and the expenditures in '26?
Oh, sorry. Let me rephrase. How does it look different for the $27 million, no, $17 million that we'll spend between now and 2027? How does that road look different?
Thank you for clarifying that. And I will phone a friend, in John Mortensen, for that question.
Hi, Councilmember Marx. Thanks for the question. The plan on this project, depending on what we have for funding, is to phase the project and to begin construction at SR 900 and work our way to the west. For the amount shown in there, that would take us about halfway to Oak Crest. And so it's probably not the most ideal ending terminally for a project. And I think that's one of the things, as we talk about funding, is to talk about where do we want to phase it and what ability do we have to fund the different phases? And so we've got it broken out into what would be about $5 million segments and trying to combine them in order to get from SR 900 to Oak Crest, which I think would be the most logical phase-one project. That's about $20 million. And that's to build the whole section in that section of road, or segment of road. Does that answer your question?
No. Like, what's different? What's different? If I'm driving down Newport Way in 2027, how does it, just at a high level?
Yes.
One paragraph answer.
There will be a shared-use pathway on the north side of the road for pedestrians and bicyclists. There will be bicycle lanes on Newport Way. There will be a widened, or a lengthened turn lane at SR 900. And there will be sidewalk on the south side of the road, except for in the segment along where the Burisma purchase was. There won't be sidewalk on there in order to preserve the hillside. And then there'll be, when we get past the future years, there'll be center medians as we continue building our way to the east.
Okay, so there's a shared-use path on the north side currently, right? And there's a turn lane at 900 currently, but we'd have better versions of those?
Yes, and landscaping too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we, I'll ask if there are any other questions. And not seeing any. Okay. Great question bullying in my head, but I can't remember it now. Too many things going on, so I'll see if it comes back up, but go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Suzy again. The next project, and as City Administrator Bob Quinns touched on, is the Northwest Semamish Road Non-Motorized Improvement. And this, of course, has been a project in the CIP, certainly the last CIP, which was, I'll admit, my first CIP with the city. But I know that this has been a priority for quite some time. And as a point of reference, in the last CIP, this was one of the projects that was intended to be funded, fully funded, by the TBD sales tax. So when that sales tax, since that sales tax is not assumed in this CIP, the majority of the work on this project, it's listed here in future years, but really what that means is we don't have an identified funding source for it currently. That if we're able to identify a funding source or perhaps create a new funding, or identify a new funding source through further council discussion, we would certainly move the timeline up on this project. So the two funding sources here, at least for the 2022 preliminary design work, which could also help inform what that future cost might be, to help further refine that, help further refine. It might also give us, in doing that early design work, it might also give us the opportunity to potentially apply for grants or potentially further refine other potential revenue sources here. But primarily, the two funding sources, at least for that preliminary design work, is from the School Zone Safety Fund, as well as the General Fund. And again, the General Fund note here is referring to the other portion of that $1.25 million in American Rescue Plan that were revenues that we're anticipating, or proposing, using for this project and the project before. So I see that, so there's some questions starting to queue up on this project, so perhaps I will stop talking.
Thanks, Suzy. Councilmember De Michele, question?
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michele. So, Suzy, would this investment get us to what they call shovel-ready status in case the federal government does pass this big infrastructure package that they're talking about? Or are we already at shovel-ready status? Where does this get us in terms of the investment of these funds? Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. That is a great question that I do not know the answer to. So I will phone a friend and ask if John Mortensen is able to join us again.
Thanks for the question, Councilmember De Michele. This would get the project shovel-ready for a state or city-funded project? It would not get the project shovel-ready if we were to receive federal funds? We would need more money in order to do the necessary environmental approvals if we wanted to try and federalize this project?
Does that answer your question, Councilmember De Michele? Yes, okay. And looking at Councilmember Marx for a question.
So, School Zone Safety Fund. In a normal, non-COVID year, how much do we bring in from the School Zone Safety Fund? And this presupposes only using 2022 funds for TR 028. What are we envisioning using those funds for in the other five years?
Thank you, Councilmember Marx. This is Suzy again. The School Zone Safety Fund in a typical year, I believe, brings in around $800,000 a year. I will certainly defer to Director Goldberg if I am misstating that. And as we were planning out revenues across the CIP, and certainly one of the main purposes of a planning document like this is to be able to plan out not just the given-year revenues, but also how we might utilize fund balance, or how we might build up fund balance over a few years to then have available revenues if we need a larger amount in future years for a project. So these revenues, I believe in the 2021 budget, for example, we did not anticipate a full year's worth of revenues. As you noted, it is a unique year in that it is a COVID year still. But the CIP assumes a certain starting point in 2022, an estimated starting fund balance, which assumes reduced revenues in 2021, the revenues that we actually collected in 2020. So really, over the course of this CIP, we are proposing using both the annual revenues that we collect, not necessarily just planning out programming for the specific amount that we would bring in within that particular year, that we would bring in $800,000 in a year, we would spend $800,000 in that year. But it really plans the use over the course of the full CIP. So in some cases, that might mean we're using revenues that were brought in in that year. In some cases, it might utilize the fund balance within that fund. It's, this would certainly be something that would be easier to visually see with that matrix that we discussed earlier tonight that I will be providing the council, to be able to see which projects are anticipating to use those funds over the course of this six-year CIP. I'm not sure if I answered your question. So I'll ask if I did.
No. What are we going to do with the other $5.6 million that we're going to collect from the school zone? This Central Issaquah Plan, I looked for other places where we say School Zone Safety Fund, and I don't see it. So hypothetically, we're going to generate $5.6, wait, no, it's late, my math is fuzzy, $4 million in the other five years. What are we going to do with that $4 million?
We, some of those funds, I will say, some of those funds are used for operating expenditures to certainly maintain the cost of the cameras and for enforcement. I believe that comes out to approximately somewhere between $150,000 to $200,000 a year. Of course, that does not map out all of the amount that you just noted. Some of that will certainly be, oh, I'm sorry. I see Director Goldberg has added that she has a comment, so I will certainly defer to her if she'd like to.
Director Goldberg.
Hello, everyone. This is Beth Goldberg. I think what I'd like to suggest, Councilmember Marx, is that we report that back to you more comprehensively and more specifically. One of the challenges with the School Zone Safety Fund is it's somewhat restrictive in its use. So in the past, and one reason we've built up the fund balance in the past is we haven't had projects that have linked to it. But I think it would be more helpful if we could map out what the future plans are and you could see what future money may be available, what not available. I think that's mainly what you're getting at.
That sounds like a great answer. I will ask how much we have in the fund right now, since you're here?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I can try and, I could dig into that and see if I could find it. But I think it might be more efficient if we put that as part of a response to you after the meeting.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, and Council President Hunt, I believe you were next on questions.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. On the last couple of projects, there was the state and federal grants, even though we haven't actually gotten those. We put them in as the funding source because I think we know that we need a funding source and we need grants for those projects. And so I'm wondering why, in this case, we aren't using that approach for planning for a funding project?
Thank you, Council President Hunt, for that question. This is Suzy again. Thank you, Council President Hunt, for that question, this is Suzy again. And I think that last project is a good example of grants that we have identified, that we are currently applying for. Certainly, in, in past CIPs, there has been what you described, where grants had been noted as a funding source because we needed a funding source, but that we hadn't necessarily identified a, a grant that we were likely to receive. Certainly, in the case of that last project, in fact, I'll, I'll move the slide back to, to better answer it. Those grants have been identified and we're in the process of, of pursuing those. I'm happy to defer to John Mortenson again, if he wants to, or if you'd like more information on what those specific grants are as well.
Well, for my question, I think that's not necessary. I think the answer, it seems like the answer, and correct me if I'm wrong, the answer to the question is that the level of certainty in the grant application process, at, at a point where we know what the grant is and have identified a specific grant, so then it goes into the planning document, and if we haven't, then we don't put it in the planning document, at least at this point in time.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
And I see a comment from City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I, I think the issue regarding how grants are listed is, is, has been a really important one this evening, and I think that we will go back and scrub through this, and either identify the specific funding source, because obviously, there's lots of federal grants, there's lots of state grants. We can identify them by their names, and we can say those that have been applied for and received, and those that have not. I think as, as Miss Moncel said, we've tried to get away from just putting federal grant, 50 million dollars, and, you know, the, the project's balance. I think that's what we've tried to do. So this is, again, an iterative process to make this document more transparent and more meaningful, but we'll go back and do that. So thank you, those of you who have mentioned that this evening, Councilmember DeMichelle and others, we'll, we'll make those changes.
Okay, and while I ask for any other questions, I'll go ahead and, I remembered mine for the new partway, SR 900 to Southeast 54th Street. I could use a refresher on that project and the needs for that. So if somebody could email me, like, the latest time that we talked about it, so that I can go back and look at that, I think that would be useful. And I might be so bold as to say, I don't think we've talked about it since I've been on council, so maybe the other new members would appreciate a review as well. So that's more of an offline request, but something I wanted to make sure to note. And I'm not seeing any other questions on these two particular items. So we'll move on to the next one.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Walsh, this is Suzy again. So the, the next project that we're, we're highlighting tonight is the Pavement Management Program, or TRO 30, which is on page 108 of the book. This annual program, it coordinates interdepartmental projects to provide cost-effective maintenance efforts that extend the life of roadways and sustain a safe, reliable, and low-maintenance surface for all modes of transportation. And as you can see from the table here, the, the project is anticipated to primarily be funded by REIT, as well as some general fund dollars, specifically in 2022. And it's important to note here that the, the general fund dollars, as we're calling them here, are sort of a different bucket of general fund dollars than the last two projects. So whereas those last two projects are proposing to utilize the dollars from the American Rescue Plan, the 1.4 million here of general fund dollars is proposed to come from an increased general fund fund balance that became available as a result of better-than-anticipated 2020 revenue performance. So it's really coming out of a general fund fund balance. And we're estimating that this total increase in fund balance over what was anticipated, at least in the time of the 2021 budget, is to be about 2 million dollars, as was described in the, the year-end memo included in last week's council packet. So of that 2 million, we are proposing utilizing the full 2, 2 million in this proposed CIP. 1.4 million of it would be for this project in 2022, and the other 600,000 is to, is proposed to support the Gilman Boulevard improvements, which is TRO 16. And another piece that I'd like to flag on this project is that, as you can see from the, the table for this project, it's not fully funded beyond 2023. And if we are to be able to fund this project to the full amount proposed here in 2024 and beyond, we'll, we'll need to identify an additional revenue source, or reduce the project cost down to what we can support with existing revenues. And the reason for that difference in particular is these were similar to the amounts that were included in, in the last CIP, I believe. But the last CIP also assumed that, that difference between REITs and, that, that wouldn't be supported by existing REIT revenues would be supported by TBD sales tax revenues. So, and, and it's also worth noting, too, that here in the, the future years for those REIT revenues, it's a good example of the type of project where we would need to examine available revenues for each annual budget process, what's actually available in REIT 2, to support a project like this and other projects. And it's a, it's a good example of a type of project that we would certainly examine comprehensively among the other capital projects proposed in an annual budget. And, and why we examine the available revenues for each capital project each year as part of the annual budget process. So that is a good stopping point for me, if there are questions on this particular project.
I see a question from Councilmember DeMichelle.
Thank you, this is Councilmember DeMichelle, and Suzy answered my question, but I will make, well, I'd like to make observation. So it was, it was good to see that we, we went from a 65-year cycle down to a 35-year cycle through the funding for the 2021 budget. And it looks as though we will be able to hold that for another year, and then we're once again back to a lower level of funding, and therefore, I presume we would be going back to the 65-year cycle. And so I'm just, I guess, like, my thought or my comment or question is, it would, in order to maintain that 35-year cycle that we got it down to, which is a pretty reasonable cycle for pavement management, would we really need to increase the fundings for this, for these projects to about 2.3 million every year? And should we reflect that in the CIP?
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle, this is Suzy again. I, I see that Bennett Ashbaugh has turned on his camera, so I will defer to, to him to answer this question.
Yes, thank you, this is Bennett Ashbaugh, PMP, Streets Manager. A fully, a fully funded program for what we believe the program should be is around the 2.3 million dollar range. And that is also needs to, you also need to consider, you know, inflation and whatnot as you move forward in the years. The cost of asphalt's going up pretty drastically. And so, right now, this year, we're in a great spot funding-wise, we're down to that 35-year cycle. But that 35-year cycle is assuming that we're gonna maintain that level of funding along with inflation as you move forward. So it's a figurative number to say we're at 35 years, but if we stayed here and we kept growing from these, from this point forward at a reasonable rate, then we would be at that cycle. So essentially, the answer is yes, 2.3-ish, around there. I can get the exact number from our pavement data scan to you, but that, that's about where we're at.
So from my point of view, if we don't fully fund it and we go back to 65-year cycle, what we're doing basically is we're kicking a huge bill down the line to generations to come. And that's just my, my point of view, I feel like we, we just can't, it's not an ethical thing for us to be doing. So I guess my comment here is, how, how could we reflect what is really needed for that program in our CIP planning document? And, and maybe, I, maybe I need to understand better about how a CIP is put together. And, but Councilmember Marts talked about how the money is movable, between our revenues are movable, and we have to make those decisions. And this is one area where I don't, I just don't think that it's ethical for us to continue to kick that can on down the road and not fully fund the cycle that's needed for maintaining our roads. So that's just.
So can I, this is Beth, and I think Wally might be making the same comment. I think, I think this, this project is a good microcosm and really underscores the challenges that we have with the transportation program. And we talked about this in the last CIP, this I know predated you, Councilmember DeMichelle, but we don't have adequate revenues to support all of our transportation needs. And in the last CIP, the Pavement Management Program was slated for the TBD sales tax. That, that did not, that did not move forward. But what this is really highlighting, that in order to sustain many of these programs, including pavement management, we likely need, as the mayor mentioned when she transmitted the CIP, to have future revenue discussions to create a revenue stream to support some of these. So this is intended to highlight that.
And City Administrator Bob Quitz, did you want to add to that?
Just quickly to, you know, reinforce Mayor Polly's feeling about this, and that is, you know, when you see the general fund proposal, when you see the proposal for the Recovery Act money, you know, what the mayor is, I think, saying to the council and to the community is, yes, these are really important projects. Yes, as the Finance Director said, we need to find other revenue sources to sustain them, but as mayor, she wants to put money in now. She wants to continue that momentum. So if, if the council so chooses to go to the voters with a transportation benefit district sales tax, we have a story to tell, that we have identified projects, we have identified costs, and as we go to the voters and ask them to tax themselves further, we have specifics. And so this CIP, especially these last few projects that we've talked about, really are meant to make that case, that we need those additional dollars, that we have these deficits in these programs and projects. And if that sales tax was approved, this is the, the practical, right now, improvements that people would see.
Okay, we have a few more. Council President Hunt, question?
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. So I have a question on what City Administrator Bob Quitz just said, firstly. The, previously, when we did plan on having a transportation benefit district, we put that as a funding source that we thought we would have. Currently, that's not in here. I think, you know, you, you mentioned that you, we want to have a story about the needs here. I guess my question would be, would it, would, shouldn't we then put that TBD funding source as a funding source like we did before when we thought we needed that funding source? Or indicate somewhere in the document that that's what we're thinking of funding this with?
Thank you, Council President Hunt, members of the council. We, we certainly could do that. I think that also then begs the question regarding grants as well. And, and that's maybe a policy question, or certainly something I would want to talk further with Mayor Polly about, to identify that. I mean, what, what you see on this slide, for example, is the deficit without a funding source. I mean, perhaps we have another category of anticipated revenues, and we could put potential grants, the TBD sales tax in that to demonstrate that. So I, I very much appreciate that comment, Council President. We'll take that back, and we'll come back with an answer at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then my original question was actually for Councilmember DeMichelle, just to make sure I understood. So the concern here is the, the deficit, because we do identify 2 point, you know, around 2.3, 2.6 or so million as the total expenses each year, but the issue, the, the concern you're raising is around that, that deficit line, is that right?
That's correct. And let me jump in real quickly and say, I'm already regretting my use of the word unethical. Don't mean to imply that anybody is being unethical when they're creating this. There are lots of, obviously, lots of competing projects, and all of them are worthy, and, and so I'm sorry that I use that, that term. But yes, that's, that's my concern. My concern is that we're just passing, you know, roadways need to be maintained, or you lose them, and it becomes even more and more expensive to, to, to maintain them as time goes on. And so if we don't identify how we are going to keep ourselves on a, on a 35, 30-year cycle, we are simply pushing that down the road to the residents of this town 10, 20, 30 years from now. And I think we've got to look at how we fund this so that we can fully fund our maintenance program. So thank you for the, for, for asking me to clarify.
Okay, and are you good there, Deputy Council President?
No, I have, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Council President Hunt, are you good? And then I'll go to Deputy, yeah, okay, Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh, this is Chris Ray, and the Council President, I should never be able to ask questions next to each other, it's too darn confusing. I, I'm gonna apologize ahead of time, if you already answered this question, but why does the Pavement Management Program jump so dramatically between 2022 and 2023? Is there something going on that I missed, and, but what's, what's the, what's the driver there?
I, thank you, Deputy Council President Ray, this is Suzy again. I might just take a preliminary stab at this and then see if Bennett wants to jump in with, with further thoughts. It is important to note, too, that the 2021 budget has a pretty substantial investment in pavement management that it had, in, in this program, that it, it includes the amount that we had anticipated to do in the last CIP for, for 2021, as well as restored some funding that had been delayed in 2020. And I, I believe another aspect here, and actually, I see Bennett has his camera on, so I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, so I will let him take it from here.
Hi, I actually missed the first part of that question, could you repeat that question again?
Sure, and in 2022, we're spending 1.2 million dollars on pavement management, and in 2023, we're looking to spend 2.2 million dollars. I'm just trying to understand what the driver for that significant increase between the two years is.
Sure, so the, the funding for this year, which is a substantial amount, is in the 2 million dollar range, was the deferment from 2020, basically trying to make it whole. So we're still, we're still taking the funds from 2020 and kind of making 2021 a more robust year to make up ground for that. Moving into 2022, we're kind of, we're moving back to our original funding source with an increase, because our original funding, not source, amount was 1 million dollars, or 900,000. So we're still increasing it up to 400, and then in 2023, we're trying to hit that level that we're fortunate enough to be in this year, getting to that 35-year cycle and trying to get to a point where we're hoping by 2023, we can identify another funding sources to be able to increase the, the total amounts moving forward to that relative point.
So is, is the short, I mean, is the reason we're spending less in 2022, which I, to Councilmember DeMichelle's point, is less in the 35-year replacement cycle, is that just driven by the fact we couldn't find an offsetting funding source?
It, obviously, I would tell you, I would like the 2.3, right, if we could make it happen. But we do have a very strong competing projects on all fronts, and this is an increase from our typical funding year. So, you know, I think we can get a lot done with 1.4, especially with a concrete maintenance program also receiving funding to support the. program also receiving funding to support the ADA ramps that are triggered by the PMP program. That helps not dilute that fund by doing the concrete work as well. So I really, I, I think we're moving in the right direction. And there's no, I don't have a specific answer for you in terms of why we're at 1.4 next year, but it is an increase and it is a positive from a typical year.
Okay, thanks.
And, and this is Suzy. I may, if I may, just add one more comment, too, on 2023 versus 2024 as well, and why it was 2024 that was the year where it began to show as partially unfunded. And part of that goes back to one of the, the things that we did for every project in the CIP, which was balance revenues and expenditures for 2022 and 2023, with the understanding that there will be two budgets and another CIP before we get to 2024. So there is certainly still time to identify another revenue source potentially for, for projects like this.
Is there a reason we can't or didn't move some of the REIT II funding to 2022, take some out of the 2023 bucket and smooth those, those two areas? I mean, I'm just struck by, yes, it's more than we're spending in 2021, but it's, it's a substantial jump between 2022 and 2023. And if we were to reallocate funds, would that give us kind of a smoother increase instead of a big, big old jump like that? I'm not sure I'm advocating for it, I'm just curious about it.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. This is Suzy again, and I'm stalling slightly as I shuffle through my CIP book. But in particular with REIT II, one of the, the issues that we had was, was cash flow, was making sure that we had available revenues each year that, for, for other projects as well. I know for REIT II in particular, it was, the primary use of it is going to be for the pavement management program. And actually, I see city, oh, I guess he turned his camera off. So, and it's certainly something that we can come back with. And it's certainly at the council's prerogative to, that if there are other projects that they would like to see some of, that you would like to see some of these funding sources move between projects, that's certainly feedback that we, that we would like to, to get to make sure that the final proposal that comes to you on the 17th reflects what you would like it to reflect.
Great, thanks.
Hey, Councilmember De Michele, did you have a comment?
Thank you, no, I, that was earlier.
Okay, that's what I thought. I will ask if there are any other questions. And while I am waiting to see, I will put in my comments that I am very much strongly in favor of pavement management program. And had some of the same questions about if we could smooth in some of the expenses into 2022. So I'd be interested to hear some of those answers as they come through. And I'm not seeing any other questions or comments, so on to the next slide.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Suzy again. So the final transportation project that we'd like to highlight tonight is the Southeast Black Nugget retaining wall repair, which is TR 033, which is on page 109 of the document. So as the name implies, this project will replace the retaining wall behind Fred Meyer along Black Nugget Road. And as you can see from the table here, the project is anticipated to be funded by REIT, in particular REIT I here. But it's also important to note that even with the REIT dollars that are anticipated over this six year horizon, the project remains partially unfunded. This is another project that remains partially unfunded in 2024 and 2025. So it's another example of a project where we would need to potentially look at identifying another funding source or perhaps look at the mix of projects within those given years. And in the, the years leading up to it as well, because certainly with a revenue like REIT, part of that equation, as we've discussed, is fund balance. So it's not just necessarily what project we might do, for example, in 2024 here, that's unfunded by about 979,000 anticipated. But it's also, the REIT revenues available in 2024 is, of course, also dependent on the use of REIT between now and 2024. So it, it's just a piece of context that I wanted to add to these discussions around use of revenues as well. So with that, I will pause again for this final project to see if there are any, any questions on this particular project.
Okay, so far I'm not seeing any. So again, while I am waiting, I will just put in my question is, do we have the data to suggest that it will last until 2024 to 2025? It, it seems like that is actually, if I'm looking at it correctly, moving up from something that was an out-year project. So is there, is there a sense of urgency other than community interest?
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Suzy again. I will defer to John Mortensen for that question.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Councilmember Walsh. The, I've been talking to the project engineer on that project, Tony Nguyen, for a while. And it's something that he's been paying careful attention to, and he's been managing the projects to maintain it. And this was his recommendation as the ideal time to replace it, based on the reports that he's had and the work he's done on it.
Okay. And I also see a comment from Councilmember Martz.
So this is a twice given gift. This was a gift from the county to the city when we annexed this portion of unincorporated King County. We wouldn't have built this wall the way that it was built if it had been built by the city. And then it was a gift from the council of nine or 10 years ago. Stacy probably wasn't on council yet, but I know I was. And we kicked this can down the, down the road and we said we didn't need to do it then and we do it when we need to do it. Sounds like we need to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you for that historical context there, Councilmember Martz. I appreciate it. Seeing no other, I will say we can move on to the next slide.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Suzy again. The, like the park section, this is, I admit, a bit of a loaded question now at this point, if the council is comfortable with this, this mix in timing and funding strategy for transportation projects. So perhaps, given the way, the, the feedback that we've received this evening, I would reframe this to instead be if there's additional information beyond what, what we've already heard, to provide additional information, additional context that would be helpful to the council as you perhaps look at these, these projects more comprehensively across asset categories, across not just the projects that were proposed, that were discussed this evening, but if there's any additional feedback or any additional information that we can provide that will help you in your deliberations.
Fantastic. I see them already coming in. Councilmember Martz?
Yes, I have new information. I'm going to begin and end my comments with the statement that we really need to repole the seven council members on their priorities for the city. The 2018 Capital Improvement Plan, a third of the funds were identified for Northwest Semamish Road. Then on March 4th of 2019, the Ad Hoc Finance Committee presented recommendation on funding, where by far the largest item was the Northwest Semamish Road. And then the 2020 CIP reflected that. It was the largest line item. It was equal to the sum of Southeast 43rd, the light at Providence Point, and pavement management, put them together. It was about the same size. I can't speak for the 2005, 2006 councils, because I wasn't there. But I feel this council made a promise in 2019. I don't break my promises. So I won't be supporting any non-safety related capital projects until we have a funding plan for TR 28 in place. It is a commitment this council made to the residents of Western, the Western part of the city. If, if you want to see outreach, talk to the folks in those communities about what it's like not to have non-motorized access to the rest of the city. I don't believe that this council has ever said that the undercrossing, or frankly, that Newport Way's State Route 900 improvements are anywhere like the importance of Northwest Semamish Road. And if I'm wrong on that, if the administration has that feedback from the council, feel free to correct me. But I'm going to close my comments again by saying it's time for the seven of us on camera to say what our priorities are and then to have our capital improvement plan reflect the priorities that the seven of us restate. Thank you.
Okay, and a comment from Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I also wanted to comment on TR 028. I think in retrospect, the transportation benefit district package that we put together, the, the intent to prioritize projects in that, in that planning process, you know, we, we selected projects that we thought were most important, that we heard the most about from constituents, and that, that we felt needed to have a funding source. So we had the transportation benefit district listed as that funding source. And then in retrospect, those are the ones that we haven't, it seems, gotten other funding sources for or applied for grants for. And so now we don't have that funding. But I think that's unfortunate, because I do think the PR 28, for example, it was, it was a priority of the council and that's why, and so I'll just speak for myself. I think it is a priority. I think we need to figure out a way to reflect that commitment to getting that project done in a timely manner in the CIP. I don't think it conveys that the way it is currently presented in the CIP. And it is a major concern for that neighborhood to not be connected to the rest of the city. So would like to see that one changed. On the positive side, I think, I feel like we're figuring out the pavement management. There's positive improvements there. And I also, I think Black Nugget Road, having a, having a year when we know we're going to replace it is also necessary. And I appreciate those, those changes in the CIP.
Okay, a comment next from Deputy Council President Ray, even though he said he was not going to do back to back comments, but all these slides.
I know, I know. I was, I was going to own that one, too. I was gonna, I was gonna fess up to, to not following through. Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Chris Ray. I have a couple of thoughts, and it goes back to a little historical perspective. But when we did the last CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, we heard fairly loud and clear from a couple of constituent groups. One of them was our good friends at Providence Point, you know, looking for some sort of traffic signal to make their intersection safer. And we prioritize that at the top of the list and, and moved forward with that with a get it done kind of strategy. And I think we are, are very close to having that piece of work done. And I, I think that's pretty exciting. At the same time, we also made a large commitment to non-motorized transportation from the Western part of town and how important that was. And we also made a commitment that we would work with WashDOT to finish their, their construction to enable us to move forward with, with our, our ongoing work in that area. And I, and I think to Councilmember Martz's point, this is something that we, we've been promising for a long time and we need to follow through on. One of the difficulties that I am having, and this may be getting ahead of transportation, is when we did the last CIP, we formed an ad hoc, or we didn't form an ad hoc, we utilized the ad hoc Long Term Finance Committee to do the, the job of Tetris-ing these things together into a package. And it worked pretty effectively, because we could have a much more nuanced and interactive discussion between the council and members of the administration about what was possible, what were the priorities. And I thought that process worked pretty well. And we came back with a plan that was aligned with the views of council as a whole. And, you know, there's part of me, there's a large part of me that would like to see us adopt a similar approach to dragging this plan over the finish line, to be able to have these discussions where we can have working sessions instead of study sessions, to actually put these pieces together, to get a plan together that reflects what we think are the priorities of the council and, more importantly, the priorities of the community. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember De Michele, comment?
Thank you, this is Councilmember De Michele. I think this is a, for me, this has been a very sobering discussion and review of the CIP. We, as I said earlier, we have a lot of good projects that are competing with each other. And it's really obvious to me, we don't have enough revenue. So I think my first thoughts are that we need to, we've alluded to new revenue sources several times. I think we need to start that dialogue. Let's start talking about it. I know that we're in difficult times with COVID. I know we've been through a terrible year last year. But these projects aren't going to get done unless we start talking about where else are we going to get revenue. And so we might as well start that dialogue. It may not happen for another year if we start the dialogue now and, or maybe even longer, but we've got, got to get that conversation going. I think there are several projects, as Director Goldberg pointed out, that almost sell themselves in terms of why they are needed by the public and why they are necessary for safety. So on that note, on the safety note, I too would place TR 0028 at the top of my priorities. I think we've made a promise to that community. I drive out there often, because I have a dear family out there. My nephew and his family live out there. And every time I drive out there, I look and think about the safety of that road. And it is, it's really scary. And we need to think about, you know, safety first, and that would be at the top of my priorities. And then very obviously, I am passionate about the pavement management program and making sure that we fully fund that and make sure that we bring that cycle down to a reasonable, manageable cycle for the future of our city. I do appreciate the fact that this CIP, for the most part, with some, some adjustment, worked only with what we know are existing funds or highly anticipated funds. And I'd like to see consistency in that. But I think overall, it was a really good job. And I appreciated that, because so much of the 2020 CIP was based, the funding revenues were based on a proposed funding source that, of course, didn't turn out to be a funding source. And so to me, this is a much more realistic document, and I do appreciate that. And I do want to reiterate again, I appreciate the work that staff put in on this. This is, these are hard decisions and these are very complex projects to pencil out and to think about strategically. So I want the staff to understand that I really appreciate all the work that they did on this. So back to my main point, let's start the dialogue about how we start to pay for these projects. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a comment and question from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. This is Councilmember Hall. I won't repeat what others have said. I too would like to see options for additional funding on the Northwest Semamish Road project. I did want to make a quick comment and then ask a, ask a question. First and foremost, I want to thank city staff who are very. First and foremost, I want to thank city staff who are very actively involved in the South Lake Semamish community. No one in the South Lake Semamish community feels that they've been duped by the change. They have been very, very closely communicated with over the last few years. So I just want to make sure that's out there on the record, too. And in terms of a question that I think would be useful information for staff to come back with is something that I hear every time I talk to a community member out there, is there any way the scope of the project can be narrowed? Or is this the base? Is this the foundation by which we can't go any lower? I hear all the time out there that we don't need something fancy, we just need something safe to walk down the road. So my question for staff would be, you know, how can we play around with this project? And where can we be flexible? Thank you.
Well, I will start some comments here while I'm waiting to see if there's anybody else that wants to feed in, but I will plus one to the concept. I like "quick, cheap, and dirty" that gets the job done in the interim while waiting for a bigger project. So can we just get some of those little sticky poles that go down and kind of protect the walkers and the bikers? I know that's not a technical term, but I feel like it gets the point across. So some of the larger feedback, I don't like seeing us spending $900,000 on a near-year planning project for a big, large project that we don't have an anticipated funding source and we don't plan on doing anything about for several years, because I find in those cases, as often happens, our community changes, it grows. People have different opinions, different things come up, and those $900,000 plans get scrapped and have to start over. So I'm looking at some of those bigger projects, like the Newport SR 900 to Southeast 54th Street, and seeing just these large dollar amounts in near-years that I'm really hesitant on. As we consider some of those new funding sources as possibilities, I also want to first make sure we've had that conversation about the whole balance of projects and where our money is going. Because one of these things where we're looking at this and saying, there's transportation projects that we feel passionate about should be funded, but at the same time, there's also a lot of those parks projects over there that, you know, is there a possibility to look at it as a full-circle concept? And then also, looking at it, one of the things I'd like explained, the, kind of looking at the previous CIP, the 2022 to 2023 years had a lot more expenditures on them. If I'm looking at the full transportation capital request for 2022, it was 18 million, and then 15.7 million for 2023, compared to this CIP, which has 6.7 million and 8 million in those years respectively. So I'd like a sense of what has been cut out, and was it cut out because we just had kind of inaccurate ideas of what we could fund in future years? Is it because we're potentially, we don't have the TBD as a funding source? Is it because we cut the fat, or we decided some things weren't as important or got shifted out here? So I'd like to understand how that shift was made and what policy considerations are in there so that we can have the discussion of kind of all of that. So those are my comments. Councilmember Mart said he has round two comments after, if Stacy has any comments. Stacy, Councilmember Goodman, did you want to chime in here on any of that?
I don't have any comments now, thanks.
Okay, fantastic. So Councilmember Mart's for round two.
Yeah, something that I think we'll need, and I don't know if we'll need it before we revisit prioritization, but I think one of the things that I'm pretty sure the administration has heard this evening is around some of the specificity, right? And I think about PK 041, the Veterans Memorial Field, Depot Park, Pedestrian Park, you know, 1.4 million and 15.2 million. We need to know, broadly speaking, what that is, you know? That could be as simple as 30 bullet items and saying, we're going to try to get to the first eight of them. But I mean, boy, I remember when we had Confluence Park, before we funded the first big chunk of Confluence Park, we had a plan. Now that plan evolved over time, and that's right and proper that it does. But I'm concerned about the level of specificity that we don't yet have in some of these things that we're, and again, I struggle with whether you need it at prioritization, but you certainly need it before we, I think, finalize a capital improvement plan. And a second example of that would be signage, and, you know, we talked about how do you go from 150,000 to 1.5 million? Clearly, that's a vision that's more expansive of what the signage does, but what does that mean? And what would the community get for that 1.5 million? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm sitting here writing notes. I don't know if I see any more comments or questions, so moving on to some of these final slides.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I apologize, this is Suzie again, I was also taking notes, so apologies for the delay getting back on. To look ahead at next steps and where we go from here. So following tonight's deliberations, we'll be back next week to open the public hearing and continue council deliberation. And we had originally intended for that to be focused on utility projects, and I feel we've certainly heard a number of questions and a number of follow-up items from tonight's meeting that we'd also like to address. And we certainly defer to the council if there's potentially different items you'd like to address across these next few meetings. But we'll have, beyond next week as well, we'll have additional deliberations on May 11th. Again, really allowing that, the 11th is really that final opportunity for council feedback or any final changes, if we are to have all those changes incorporated in time for a final document on May 17th, following that continued public hearing on the 17th. And that's the end of my presentation, and I see City Administrator Bob Kowits has turned his camera on, so I'm going to stop sharing my presentation and turn it back to Councilmember Walsh.
Great. So I have a bunch of notes on feedback that at some point I was going to summarize, but City Administrator Bob Kowits, you have a comment? I'll start there.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Walsh, members of the council. Thank you to the council for this excellent discussion. I think this is exactly what we were looking for this evening, to get this kind of feedback. I think we have lots of notes, and I would appreciate Councilmember Walsh taking just a moment just to confirm. We'll all go through our lists and make sure we all have the same sets of notes and feedback. I think our plan would be to come back next week. We'll start with the utility projects. I think they're generally a little bit more straightforward than perhaps some of the issues we discussed this evening, and then we'll start into the additional information that's been requested from the councils. My guess is that we'll be able to make some good progress next week so that we're not leaving everything for that third meeting. So hopefully, we'll be able to set up things, have the vast majority of the information you're looking for orally written, some combination of both, next week, follow-up, perhaps a few days later after that, and so that we'll get to that third meeting with a lot of, without a lot of unanswered questions. I would imagine the administration will certainly review all of this feedback, and I would imagine you'll see probably as soon as next week, some adjustments based on the comments this evening. So we'll keep the process moving along. And again, just want to thank the council very much for the thoughtful comments and input from this evening.
Okay, fantastic. Oh, gosh, I'm going to go straight to summary, and our clerks have mentioned that we obviously need to go back into audience comments. So let me bring all of that up. So at this point, interested to see if we have anybody on the call who would be interested in making comments. So if you haven't already signed up to speak, you can raise your virtual hand. So if you're on the phone, press star three. If you join by computer or smartphone, you're going to look for that hand icon, and it varies by device. So one option would be to go to the participant panel in the lower right-hand corner and choose next to your name, the raise hand icon. And so, wondering to see if anybody has raised their hand or has a wish to comment.
We have, yes, thank you. We have one attendee who would like to make comment, Connie Marsh. I am making you a panelist now. You can unmute and turn your camera on if you wish.
Fantastic, thanks, Connie. There you are.
Hey, I wasn't expecting you to, I was gonna, anyway. Okay, public comment after a meeting that covered massive topics and responses is hard? So as usual, I'm going to go fast because it's boring. Tola, great. I mean, bringing history through to the present is something that the community does, probably more than councils tend to do, because we remember, frankly, the retaining wall was promised to be not our property. That's how discouraging that was a long time ago. Another thing on our capital improvement plan long-term list is we have no sidewalks on Mount Olympus for anyone to be able to walk safely, much less making it a priority to expand to two sidewalks or make a sidewalk bigger. And so people on Squawk, after 20 years of not getting it, we've just given up because it's like, I guess they forgot we're here. We have all these new neighborhoods and places that need stuff, and they aren't even looking at us anymore. And it's dangerous, you know? You've got, anyway, if you haven't driven Mount Olympus lately, try driving up Squawk Mountain along Mount Olympus, and that is the only way that many people can actually get to our very teeny tiny little park on Squawk Mountain. So when I compare that to the non-notable project, which is from SR 900 on Newport Way to 12th, which goes in front of Tibbetts Park, you see first grass where no one really needs to walk because there's nowhere to go to, and then you see a portion of the side where there is a sidewalk, a fence, and then a gorgeous row of trees. And so this is a project that they're saying they need to look at near-term when we already have a sidewalk, we already have landscaping, and in the portions that somebody might really use, so why is that a near-term project? I don't get it. So then I look at the reasons for a capital improvement plan, and it seems like the matrix needs to show these two, which is unless it's in your capital improvement plan, you aren't going to get grant funding. So that is another reason to have it. And then, most interesting tonight was the reason that the notable projects were brought up, and is because I think someone perceives that those projects are sexy for fundraising from the community. And I sort of, that's not a favorite way for me to look at a capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan should be what must we absolutely do to maintain our infrastructure at the appropriate level? And that's a primary issue, and that's a baseline issue. And then it is in the range of, like Providence Point, how many years did it take us to get Providence Point, like, put in because it got being pushed to the back? What are the community desires? Is next for funding? You don't use what the community desires not being funded as a tool for people to tax themselves. That's one of those things that actually makes people grumpy when they think they're going to get something, but then they see the tax, the money to fund it pushed off, and somebody says, oh, if you want it done, you gotta support a tax. Woo-hoo, that makes people happy, not. So this has happened so many times in my 20 years of doing this, and I would like to see the capital improvement plan not be a political tool so much as just being a statement of community baseline needs and then what the community desires, what the funding mechanisms are now. And then if you need to, you can have a conversation about if we want the puffy, fluffy stuff, which is basically what's in the parks grouping right now, the Parks Department went out and said, give us your heart's desires. And that's what we have. We weren't ever asked, and how many dollars do you want to spend? So the numbers in those parks plans is like pie in the sky, you know, we want everything. And, well, that may be fine in later years for a CIP. It does get to get narrowed down to what does the community actually want to pay for, too. And they always need to be connected together so that we are looking at reality while we are planning our big parks and while we are looking at our roads and our Centralist Squaw Plan. Okay, I think my five minutes is probably four minutes and 35 seconds at this point in time, so I'm going to end with that little, was I sort of close? I'm going to end with that lecture. And one last thing, I think y'all did a great sort of bickering conversation job. I liked it. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie, we appreciate it. Clerk Akers, do we have anybody else who has been interested or raised their hands in commenting?
No others have indicated interest.
Okay, fantastic. Well, I was just going to take a moment to summarize the feedback I heard to make sure that if council, if there's anything else we want to make sure we highlight and that the administration agrees with what we've heard. So I heard a member say that they were concerned that sign-off here doesn't reflect previous stack rankings of projects and that overall, many of the projects shifted up or back from previous CIPs, which presents large policy shifts. Also want to talk about the full balance of the CIP, not just trade-offs within categories. We mentioned wanting to have information on grants as a revenue source and indicate whether it was pending or more information. We talked about looking at our expenses by revenue source and potentially creating a graph or at least a list so that we can get a better trade-off there. We asked for proposed future spending on the school zone safety fund and also the current fund balance. Talked about wanting more specificity on projects and associated policy decisions. And then I would call out kind of the two-big-project-area things that I heard the most discussion on was the pavement management program and some interest there, as well as the TR 028, the non-motorized funding and concerns there, and also interest in the project. So those were kind of the notes that I took. If anybody else has any things to highlight, Councilmember Mart, and then Goodman.
I'm not sure if I heard in there, Deputy Council President Ray had a specific suggestion around doing, I don't think, I think you called it a working session instead of a study session or words to that effect, doing something akin or a cousin to what we did in 2019. And I think that's a particularly good suggestion. It doesn't, it kind of blows out the current schedule, so I don't know how that works, but I think that offers a path towards getting clarity from the seven of us instead of just having a high noon sort of, you know, put stickies on a board, which is probably not particularly effective. So I just want to point out that suggestion and say that I, as someone who felt very passionately this evening, think that might be a good solution. Thank you.
I appreciate that highlight, thank you. And Councilmember Goodman? And Councilmember Goodman?
Yeah, I have a request and a question. I would like a list of the projects that are proposed to have funding source from the lakeside, $5 million and the amount that is proposed. And then my question is, I'm not sure what the suggestion from Councilmember, Council Deputy President Ray was about the 2019 process. I thought maybe it was a reference to the ad hoc. And so if that, so I would need some more explanation about what specifically it's supposed to be for? If it's for talking about priorities in the CIP? I just don't understand what the ad hoc would do. Or maybe we haven't, maybe that has yet to be talked about. But I, but I just don't understand what that process would intend to, what the product would be.
Good question. Let's see, Deputy Council President Ray, you have a response there?
Thanks, Councilmember Walsh. Well, I, in 2019, I think it's Councilmember Mars just stated, we did have an ad hoc. And it was the role of the ad hoc to look at all of the different moving pieces and to put together a plan for what should be considered for funding in the CIP and when? And bring that then forward to the administration. So the current process that we went through, as best I can tell, is the administration reached out to each of the council members individually to get a sense of what was important to all of us individually and then factored that in and putting the plan together. My, I don't know if it's a suggestion or a comment or an observation, but my observation was when we did it in 19, it seemed to go more smoothly. We actually had working sessions between the administration and the council ad hoc committee to say, what are your priorities? How do we get those in? What would the funding sources look like? How do we balance parks projects with other general fund projects? And so that, that was all I was suggesting is if that was something that the body was interested in doing, as Councilmember Mart suggested, it would probably have an impact on the schedule. But it, to my mind, that worked more effectively than what we're doing right now.
Okay, I appreciate that response. We've got a small additional comment from Councilmember Mart.
Just that one of the things in 2019, for those who weren't around, you know, we had some knobs that we looked at, right? Some of those knobs include Councilmatic Bonding Authority. It also includes ending fund balance, which is an ongoing conversation that might be informed by where things are going or might not be, by where things are going in the COVID response. But that, that process, I just want to point out that process had some knobs beyond just stack rank these things. It was also how do you pay for them? And how do you balance, you know, that, that body actually initially looked at a very large transportation bond and said, no, 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 no. We would want to look at a much smaller bond and have a very specific targeted set of priorities. And I, you know, I don't know if this process would want to look at that, the knob of another bond like that, but certainly Councilmatic Bonding Authority and ending fund balance are knobs that should be considered. Thank you.
Okay, a comment from City Administrator Bob Kowits.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Again, I think the discussion tonight's been excellent. I've been doing capital budgets as a city manager, city administrator, 19, 20 years. This has been about as a rich discussion as I've heard. I think there's very clear direction. And I think we'll be able to come back as the administration next week with, I think, some changes that will address many of the things that were discussed. So I really feel very positive. I think that the discussion has been very fruitful. And I imagine that we'll have adjustments that will make sense to the full council next week.
Appreciate that. And we have a question from Councilmember Goodman.
Maybe it's a question comment. It's, so I'm a, I don't have the same recollection of the 2019 process that the other two council members do. My recollection was that it was a, it was the ad hoc financial committee that got together and talked about coming up with the long term financing plan that lasted a good while. It was a year or maybe two. It was a long process. I don't recall being polled separately, though maybe I was. And I specifically don't recall that it was a specific committee for getting the CIP over the finish line. So I certainly wouldn't have any issue with the committee forming to talk about the funding issues, the revenue sources, you know, new, you know, the idea of new revenue sources. But I would, I guess I wouldn't be concerned about that committee for the purpose of prioritizing things for the CIP. That's sort of a separate question.
Let me see if I can clarify. Oh, sorry, you had cut out for a second there, but.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. What I wanted to clarify, my thought or what I was hearing from Council President Ray, I thought in talking about this was more the process that the ad hoc or financial group had gone through to have that discussion and have the stack ranking, which I wasn't a part of that financial ad hoc. So I don't know what happened there. But I wasn't hearing the suggestion to create an ad hoc, more just to use that, those concepts. So maybe that's a question to Deputy Council President Ray. Was that the intention?
What I was making was a suggestion that if we were not satisfied with where we were going, that was an option for moving it forward. I thought it worked really well last time. I think we are recalling it differently, so.
Okay, so really good feedback, robust conversation here. I appreciate the two call outs at the end on things that I had not noted down. So City Administrator Bob Kowits, Susie, Deputy, everybody. Have you gotten the information that you need to move forward with this?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Really appreciate the robust discussion.
Okay. I, good, I'm off mute. So that, I believe, was the only item on our agenda tonight. I'm going to have to go back up and see. I think that was, oh, we do have a good of the order on the agenda. So does anyone have anything for good of the order at this point this evening? I will wait a few moments. Are we all tired from just putting it all out there on the table with the CIP? I mean, we did. Councilmember Goodman, is that a question from before? No, it was, and you don't have a new one now. Thank you for the head nods and shaking I interpret. I'm going to say at this point, we don't have any good of the order. So I'm going to say we are adjourned at 9:29 PM. And thank everyone, including all of the various staff members that were in attendance. Thank you very much for your time tonight and we'll see you next time.